The Monday, June 4th, meeting of the Albion City Council. If you have a phone or electronic device, I ask that you place it on silent. I call this meeting to order. We will begin with a moment of silence. Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Domingo, if you please, call the roll.
Councilmember Barnes.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Lawler.
Here.
Spicer.
Here.
French.
Here.
And Mayor Brown. Here. Are there any comments from council this evening? Councilmember Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple things. I just want to say it was a good thing to have the Albion-Marshall Connector up and running at least for another year. We had about four or five people that committed for three years, and the other four or five people that were at the table, we have to apply every year, but I am happy and excited that we did get some three-year commitments. And I want to thank our interim chief Scott Kip for attending the meetings with me. He's awesome in that. I also want to bring to the attention to my fourth precinct. I delivered some clothespins to help with communication for literature that I pass out. And I want to ask that you please continue to have that clothespin out so that I don't have to put it in a mailbox or anything like that. It just makes it more convenient for me to have communication with you. So I'm asking that you do that. I passed out literature this weekend, and some of my literature got picked up by the post office. So once again, I'm asking that you please keep that clothespin. Also, while I was out this weekend, I talked to some of the people in my precinct. One of the things that was a concern to them was our street sweeper. And they wanted to know if our street sweeper could at least do one precinct per day throughout the week. I'm not sure how we would do that, but I'm just putting it out there because I told the resident that I would make it known. Also, another concern was the Maple Street. As you come up North Street, you can turn left or right on Maple. And it was brought to my attention that the right turn on Maple has one side that you can park on and the other side that you can't. So if you park, if you go to the right, where you can park on both sides. So they was wanting to know if we could make it the same as the north end of Maple Street. I'm not sure how we do that or who I talked to, but I did say that I will mention it. Also, I want to invite my precinct, and it doesn't have to be my precinct, but any precinct, to the Neighborhood Council tomorrow from 7:00 to 8:00 at the Methodist Church. Okay? And so, let's see. I just want to share a success story. While I was out in the community, there's an elderly lady, and I was talking with her, and she made a concern about how her yard gets raked and how her yard gets shoveled when it's snowtime. And she has a neighbor that looks out for her, and because she doesn't have much income coming in, what she does to pay for the service is she bakes sourdough bread. And so they have a good connection, and I'm happy that the fourth precinct is showing unity, which is something that I am very excited about and I'm all for. And one thing, one more thing that I want to add is, well, I got two. I want to congratulate our awesome Clerk Domingo for the help she's receiving. I met the new person today. I think she's an awesome person for you, and I've seen how it does get hectic when we have elections. So I'm happy for you. Another concern was the businesses right behind us wanted to know if we could get some lines for parking behind there. I'm not sure who to talk to, but I said I would mention it because when the street does get blocked off, they want to know where the parking boundaries is. And that's all I have for today, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further comments from council this evening? Councilmember Reed.
I've been working with a committee on Juneteenth for the last three, two years. But we were supposed to have a pastor salute on Thursday, June 14th. But due to the busy schedule of many of the pastors, they're in conventions and different things, we're going to cancel that for now. But it will still be on Saturday. Saturday is our day in the park. It will start on the steps of City Hall at 11 o'clock, where we'll get our proclamation, and then we'll have a parade down in Holland Park. And there we'll have fun food and a lot of festivities going on all day long for adults and children. And bring the kids because we got a lot of games and stuff out there for them. And we got some cards and some bingo and some other things going on for adults. And everybody's invited to a coming. And then at 5:30, Ronnie Sims is going to do a Gospel Fest from 9:30, from 5:30 until 8:00 to 9:00. And that's Saturday, the 16th. But the pastor salute on Thursday, the 14th, we've canceled. So maybe next year we can slow them down some and have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barnes, Councilmember Spicer.
My comments will be more poignant when we get to the approval of the regular session minutes. But prior to that, in the minutes, there are some errors. On council rules of procedure, making a motion and voting no on it, Mayor Brown came back and stated, "You cannot." At 1:00 a.m., I text council and others concerning the rules. Because it was in the rule that you can make a motion and rule against it. You just can't speak negative on it. So that needs to be corrected. My problem is, on several occasions, I've made point of orders. I was overruled. I appealed, and I was overruled. And I usually do my homework like I did in college, late in the morning. And on several occasions, I have emailed council deputy chief, former manager Mitchell, stating the rules. I'm asking council to beware of the rules. These rules were done on a Saturday next door by the person that they selected to come in, and they chose the rules. This council voted on those rules. And council is not aware, or they're not practicing the rules that they select themselves. And it's very frustrating for me that we're not following the rules. Thank you.
Councilmember Spicer.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to take a minute to echo Councilwoman Lawler to encourage the residents of the fifth precinct, as well as residents of the city of Albion, to attend the Neighborhood Planning Council that's coming up. For the fifth precinct, it will be this Thursday, June 7th, at the Marshall Opportunity High School Library. And I want you to, citizens, to get involved in this community because we can only make it better together. And if we work together, I know that we can accomplish good and great things. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Two things that are connected. I wanted to remind citizens that there is currently a survey that is live that's being facilitated by GovHR, the firm that is assisting us with the city manager search. And the URL address for that is HTTPS colon, there's two backslashes there, That is accessible from the city's Facebook page. I know a number of the council members have posted that. I know Fork Senior Center has shared it. I'm sure there might be a link to the, it's on the city website as well. That'd be very helpful as the council moves forward. And then to also remind council that we've set a number of 30-minute interviews, or I guess just kind of interviews with the facilitator tomorrow. So please be aware of that outreach. And those are my two updates. I've seen no further comments from council this evening. We'll move on to the city manager report.
Well, I'm pleased to announce that last Friday, I received a phone call from the Marshall Community Foundation indicating that we had received the $3,000 grant that we'd put in for, for the Albion-Marshall Connector. I believe that's the last grant that we were waiting on to fully fund it for all the requests that we had made. So that was good news. I'd also like to introduce our new deputy finance director clerk, Haley Snyder. You want to stand up?
Aww.
Haley just started with us this week. She's an Albion native. She graduated from Albion High School in 2009. She graduated from Michigan State University in 2013 with a Bachelor of Science degree. And she's worked as the executive administrative assistant for the Canton County Consolidated Dispatch for the last four years. And then in 2017, she received her Master's in Public Administration. So, welcome, Haley.
Welcome. Okay. We'll move on to presentations. Item A into presentations is a presentation from the Albion-Marshall Resilient Communities Project. Ms. Lanu.
I'm here with Ian Stewart. And we are essentially announcing that year two of the project, which began in February of 2017. Excuse me. My name's Linda Lanu. I don't know if you just said that. So essentially, last year, we did a number of different things to offer opportunities for people in the two, both Albion and Marshall, the two communities, to get to know one another. And so that looked like field trips, community conversations, cookouts, movie screenings and discussions, and a book series. And one of the, we had two book series, actually. And one of them was reading Those Kids Are Schools. And the author of that book, Dr. Shayla Reese Griffin, is actually going to be in Albion this Saturday at the Albion District Library to present on the research that she did for her book and then connecting that with, you know, education in a larger context, so across the state. And then also different ways that we can communicate with each other across differences. She actually has taught courses at the University of Michigan on intergroup dialogue. So we're really excited to have her here and to be able to talk with her. And that event is open to the public. Anyone can come. And that's from 1:30 to 4:30 this Saturday. We also have a few other events already scheduled with experts from across the country coming here to Albion to offer a series of workshops. Each one of them will be at least two different workshops. So the next one that we're looking forward to is going to be highlighting arts and industrialization to kind of combine the different things that have made our two communities and really honor that history and then look at how we can envision our future with more of a grounding in our history. And then cultivating individual oral histories will happen later in the year, and there will also be a performance of those. So we're very excited to be able to offer these events to the two communities for free. And then we also will be providing, through the project, the glasswing racial healing and equity training that Star Commonwealth provides has been refreshed, and that will be offered to, I think, 125 people within the two communities for free. And then of those 125 people, 25 will be trained as trainers so they can go on in future years and provide that training themselves. So we're also very excited about that. We do have emails to announce our events and other events. So if anyone wants to get on the email list, just offering that right now. It did go around once, but anyone understood as well. And then Ian will be sharing some other things that we're doing this year.
Great. Thank you for this opportunity. So the name Albion-Marshall Resilient Communities Project, we quickly learned last year it is a mouthful. AMRCP is a bit confusing. So we wanted something that we felt everyone could connect to. And after some discussions with our strategic work group, this theme of the common thread came up and focusing on that which connects us, because that's what makes us so strong, not only within our communities, but between the two communities. And so we really picked that up and run with it. And, you know, we hope that throughout everything we do, both communities can really feel that and begin to see that. And, you know, through that weave together what really is the strong fabric that connects us. One of the, I think, unique things we're doing this year is a new video series. So there's so many phenomenal stories within both of our communities that, you know, I could admit myself that I'm just not aware of. And we've heard that from others as well. So through this video series, we feel it's going to be a great way to start to share some of those stories and through those stories, create those connections that we feel are just ever-present. We have a facilitator from Chicago who's actually done a lot of work up in the Marshall and Albion area. And just this past Saturday, had our first round of interviews at the Luddington Center. Denisea Brewer was one of them, Jerome Washington, and three other Albionites. And then just today, we kicked it off in Marshall with five individuals as well. That will begin to evolve over time. We look forward to sharing those stories with both the communities through our social media page. So we're both on Facebook and Instagram. Wouldn't mind getting a couple local theaters to open the big screen. And all that will culminate with one large mini-documentary within the year to really celebrate and showcase, you know, all those, the true uniqueness of our two communities and that which makes us one. We have a new website, too, that's in the process of being, yeah, in the process of being refreshed. So that's amrcp.org. And just really want to encourage you guys that as you see these things online or you see an email come through, please share it with your friends. Really hoping to get more people out this year and even more people connected.
Are there any questions?
From council.
Well, thank you for having us.
Thank you so much.
We did present at Marshall City Council a couple weeks ago as well. We're wanting to do more to reach out and make sure the two communities are being aware of what we're doing, so.
Yep. So if part of any other clubs, groups, organizations, associations, we'd love to come give the same spiel and keep spreading the word.
Thank you. Oh, oh, Councilmember Barnes.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have one question. The event coming up on Saturday with Dr. Shayla Griffin?
Yes.
Is that exclusively for Albion or is that for Albion-AMR?
It's for, yep. It's anybody. Anybody can come.
Okay.
Yep. But our focus is the two communities, so that's why we're advertising it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on. There are seeing no public hearings to public comments. Persons addressing the city council, we ask that you limit your comments to no more than three minutes and to agenda items only. That you state your name and address and observe proper decorum. Are there any public comments this evening on the agenda, on agenda items?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Maury Ditzler, and I live at 501 East Michigan Avenue. I serve as the chair of the Local Economic Development Corporation. And I note that the agenda tonight includes a conversation about the linkage between the Economic Development Corporation and the public charity known as the Albion Redevelopment Corporation. So it seems like an opportune time to commend all of you on your wisdom of supporting the memo of understanding that encourage the collaboration between those two organizations. There's great synergy between the organizations. They can both do their job better because of the affiliation with the other. The goal of the Economic Development Corporation is to bring business to town. One of the challenges in doing that is that people who work in businesses and own businesses are attracted to a town that has restaurants and small shops and housing and theater. And that's the goal of the Albion Redevelopment Corporation, to bring those to town. And not to make a profit doing that, but to take the funds from one project and use those to invest in another. So the Albion Redevelopment Corporation logically supports the work of the EDC. It works the other way. One of the challenges of bringing restaurants and shops and apartments to town is people need jobs, right? And so we need the Economic Development Corporation to do that. So there's that alignment of the two, and both can do their jobs better because of the other. And so the idea of common thread, right? We can do things better when we work together than we do separately. And that's true whether or not it's the EDC and the ARC, or it's NAIG and a local bank, or Albion College and Oakland Hospital. I visited with two outside groups who were touring town and thinking about doing some projects here within the last 24 hours. And both of them said that they were impressed with the strength of those collaborations. And they looked to, they looked to locating here because of the strength that comes in those collaborations. So I compliment you on unanimously supporting the memo of understanding earlier that brought those two organizations to work better together. And as you talk about tonight, that linkage, I hope you can find ways to strengthen the two working together. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Are there any further public comments on the agenda this evening?
Good evening. Al Smith, 1209 Adams Street. I'd just like to make a comment on item K of discussion, discussion, the sale of city-owned property and parcel adjacent to and north of 1,000 East Erie Street. This takes into account, well, obviously, a lot of land owned by the city around Oak Meadows Apartments and also the old Magnum Nursing Facility. I don't know what ridiculous price you're being offered for this or what ridiculous price you're going to consider. But please take a chance to get your tires dirty and drive around the back of that nursing facility, and you're going to find about a quarter of a million-dollar backup generator back there. Do you want to give that away along with the rest of our dirt? Think about it.
Is there any further public comment this evening on the agenda?
Mayor, councilmembers. Dave Atchison, 108 West Erie here in Albion. Can I rise to address agenda item H, discussion of cultural diversity in downtown business ownership? While attending past council meetings, I've listened to multiple discussions about a lack of minority businesses. At the 21st of May council meeting, under future agenda items, councilmember Spicer raised this topic, and she wished to have a discussion about designating and restricting certain specific buildings downtown for minority businesses. This causes me concern that at a time when so many in our city are investing a lot of time, money, and effort towards encouraging new businesses to settle here in Albion, that our own city council would consider taking actions that would restrict, prohibit, businesses based simply on race, the color of somebody's skin. Thirty-four percent of Albion's population are minorities, and 36.2% of Albion's businesses are minority-owned. Sixty-two percent of the population are white, and they own 57% of the businesses. Does the city council really want to decide who can own or operate a business or where that business can be located simply based on race? If such an action is taken by the city council to start designating specific buildings based on race, it will send a message to prospective business owners, "Don't come to Albion." I urge the city council not to take any actions to restrict, reserve, or prohibit, whatever term you choose. Do not take any action to restrict anyone's ability or right to own or operate a business in Albion based on race. The city council may wish to pursue positive measures to encourage more minority businesses to Albion, but I urge the council not to take actions that restrict someone's ability to own, operate a business or where they can have their business based on race. Thank you.
Are there any further comments this evening on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Approval of regular session minutes for May 21st. Uses a voice vote. If we, if there are corrections, we can put that under items for individual discussion if there's any request for that. Mr.? If you would like to make, because this is consent agenda, we usually just do a regular voice vote. But from our understanding I have is that if there is a question about a correction or something like that, we put under items for individual discussion. So if that's requested, we can do that. Is there a request to do that?
So moved.
Okay.
For.
Okay. Just do a quick voice vote to put it on items for individual discussion. Is there a motion to do that? I'll take that as a motion to do that.
Yes.
And a second. Okay. All those in favor say yes. Yes. Any opposed? Okay. So we'll use that, we'll just put that at the after K. Items for individual discussion, request approval to place, or A, request approval to place delinquent water bills and abatements on tax bills. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Do you want to?
I don't know.
Okay.
Good evening. Tom Mead, Finance Director. This is the annual, with property tax bills getting ready to go out at the end of June for summer property tax bills. Of course, this is when the city would put their delinquent abatements and/or water bills onto the tax bills through the motion or actions of the council. And again, we're just following the collection efforts as described in the charter when we're doing this. That's our method of collecting these delinquent debts that are owed to the city. As you can see, I mean, the good news, I guess, the abatement charges are down significantly. Not a lot there. Utility bills are about the same. They're pretty much unchanged. I think every year we about $0.25, $30,000. And it's, like I said, it's pretty much unchanged this year. So any questions, I guess, that I could address on that, maybe?
So I think I usually ask this every year, but obviously, they haven't paid the utility bills when it's rolled, when it's put on tax. The similarities between this list and, are they also paying their taxes?
I'd have to go back and look. I think we find that a lot of the delinquent taxes do also have delinquent either abatement and/or utility bills. So there definitely is a correlation there. You know, whether it's because people are considering, you know, walking away from the property anyway, I don't know exactly what the answer is, or whether it's simply an issue of just not, you know, being in a financial burden. But there definitely seems to be a correlation. I think when you look at the delinquent taxes, there often are also delinquent abatements and utility bills.
Okay.
One thing I might add, too, if I could, in the past couple years, we tried, I think it was suggested that we try to get the word out to property owners ahead of time. And it is, even though, I mean, it was a good intended practice, but it caused a lot of confusion. It deviated, number one, from what our normal collection is, but it also, there's a timing issue where the way that the ordinance is written, we can't do the, we can't look and generate this list until about April or so. And then by the time we get it compiled and get the letters out, you know, you run into May or so, and then we're getting ready to do the tax bills. And you get a lot of people that come in, and once the tax bills are, or once these are moved to the tax bills, we can't accept the money. And they get the letter, and they come in, and they want to pay it, and we can't accept it. We can't accept payment on any tax bill until July 1st. And it creates a lot of confusion, and we have to do a lot of adjusting. And then we actually had a situation last year where an individual came in, paid their delinquent abatement or water bill, whichever the case was, and they thought that was paying their tax in full. And they were shocked later when it went to the county as delinquent. So, and they tried to argue that, no, I paid that, and I had a receipt. Well, that was just for the delinquent abatement amount, not for the entire tax bill. So it does create a lot of confusion. I think it's simpler if we just try to, you know, do it the way the charter says, the ordinance says. So that's what we're going to try again this year.
Are there any questions from council? Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no questions, I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Barnes.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes. Well, Director Mead, item B, that was approved unanimously. Item A. Item B, discussion of income tax collection.
So I was asked, as you, I tried to put together a little bit of a narrative on the, what came... on the, what came about around 2014 or so when the state decided, I guess, to give a little more history than, or a little bit more of a background, I guess, on what's in front of you on that narrative. When the state would go into local, or cities that had local income tax under the emergency manager process, they contracted with a company here in Michigan that provides software for income tax, but also does collection or helps administer with the collection services. And if you think of it, income tax at a local level, there are not nearly as many cities that have it compared to property tax. And even, so for example, I guess what I'm trying to say is, there aren't many companies that offer that type of software here in Michigan because there's like 20-some cities in Michigan that have it. Property tax, of course, almost every city, every township has it. So, this one particular company, they get a lot of the market, almost all of it, and even the state was using them. And we're fortunate, they're right close here, they're up in Eaton Rapids, so they're very convenient for us. But at any rate, so when the state went into Detroit a few years ago, I guess, they're such a large city, the idea came up, well, maybe we could do that for them and, and offer that service for other cities as well. They initially launched the service for the city of Detroit, and if you'll remember, the state also did that for the city of Albion back in the mid-'90s through about 2002, I believe. And then they decided that since no other cities jumped on board, it wasn't feasible to do it, so they kind of pulled the rug out from under us and we had to scramble to find software and do it ourselves and bring it back in-house. More in about 2014, the state announced that they would start providing that service for the city of Detroit, and it has not gone very smoothly, I can say that. I've talked with both the city, or some of the people there in Detroit and the local income tax administration department, and also with the, the competing company who is also still in Detroit because the state is not able to do, to provide all the services that is necessary. So I tried to kind of just do a quick list of pros and cons or comparison of the two using the company that we're using versus if we were to switch to the state. Number one, I think you can see from price, they're considerably more expensive if we went with the state. The other nice thing about the company we use is we can go and choose à la carte, sort of, so to speak. We can pick if we're behind in certain processing, in certain items, we can have them do that. They just charge us so much per item, the state does not do that. The state, you're either year in or year out. We have to give them everything or nothing. Like I said, the company we use, it's all strictly up to us. Whatever we want them to help us with, they're able to help us with. Some other bigger issues that come up, the state, they're doing it for one customer, city of Detroit. So far, no one else has been willing to jump on board with that. The company we use does this about, with software, they provide it to about 65 cities throughout Michigan, Ohio. For income tax collection, they do nine cities, and I have it highlighted because it includes the city of Detroit. So even though the city of Detroit contracted with the state, the state wasn't be able to give them all the administrative support they need, so they still have to contract with this other company. Our company that we're using, there's no contract, we can quit anytime, they, you know, help us whenever. The state requires a 10-year commitment, so if you go with them, you're supposed to, they want you there for 10 years. So, I guess, you know, just trying to give you guys an idea. Oh, and another thing too, would it eliminate having to hire someone here? Not at all. Matter of fact, the city of Detroit went from a staff of about 34 to 36 people to about 31. They had to keep almost the entire staff because of the way the state is doing it. The, the state won't collect any delinquent stuff, the state don't want to do any correspondence, the state doesn't do, there's a lot of stuff the state doesn't do. So they really didn't cut staff, and I was told that their budget went from about four and a half million to about 12 and a half million, so it actually cost them significantly more. Why they continue to do it? Well, I've heard that they're trying to get out of it now, but they signed a 10-year commitment, so I don't know if they're going to be able to get out of it or not, but any questions on that?
So, just for a little context, so basically, Albion is one of around 22 cities that has income tax.
Yep.
And here, that makes up about 50% of our?
I would say probably closer to a third, 33%.
Okay.
You got, you got revenue sharing is roughly, ballpark, roughly a third, property tax, roughly a third, and income tax, roughly a third.
Okay. So it's a significant component of revenue?
For general fund, very significant, absolutely.
And then, the, the reason why we, and I appreciate you doing this because we had talked about this, is, and you, can you explain a little bit about, we, we hired the company to help us catch up?
Sure can.
That's, that's one component, but then also the, the component about if someone, and I know we talked about this, but it'd be just for council's information, if someone works out of town, you know, for, for example, if someone worked in Battle Creek, I think Battle Creek has city income tax, so like, you know, half a percent goes to them.
Right.
Half a percent goes to us.
Right.
But then, knowing that that actually is, that income is being generated and getting the city's share, how, you know, obviously, the state has access, and I think what you mentioned when we talked is, you know, they, they have certain federal tools, but that restricts our ability to, to get information on the taxpayer because it's like kind of really federal privacy restrictions. But can you talk to a little bit about the, the catch-up, but then also in the future, how the company can help us make sure that we're collecting, let's say, for those who are not working, or who are working in companies that are outside the community that might not be accounting for that?
Sure. And trying to take one, or to take one question at a time, just, I guess, going back to the early part of the question on, we think, we came to you and asked if we could get money budgeted to contract with this company starting last year, 2017. And we did that, and we had a glitch, not with the company, but with the bank, our bank. For whatever reason, the auditors at our bank decided that the information that they are putting on the statements that would tell us for all the corporations who are making, withholding payments to us every month, you know, they're coming in electronically into our bank account, and we would have an ID, a tax ID number to know what corporations are making those. And the bank's auditors decided, and I'm not talking personal social securities, these are corporate IDs, the bank's auditors decided that information should not be on a bank statement until they took it off. So for several months, we had statements that showed all kinds of money coming in, these electronic deposits, and we had no idea who made them, who sent them to us, and it, it was a mess. It took us months and months and months to try to get that sorted out. The bank was trying to run alternative reports for us and find a workaround solution, and the problem was it held this company up because this company, it's hard to go after somebody that accuses them of not paying when you don't know. I mean, maybe the payment was there, we just didn't know because we didn't have the idea of, you know, who, who paid, who sent payments to us. So, we finally got all that straightened out with the bank. We now have a system that's working again where we can identify who are submitting the payments to us, so, but there was a catch-up period, so we really didn't get going strong on this in '17 until near, very end of the year. Towards the end of the year, this company did start helping us significantly with delinquents, and we do have quite a good number of delinquent income tax accounts. So they are now aggressively sending out letters, and we are getting a lot of people calling, coming in, making payments that, you know, are getting these letters in the mail. So I think we're going to start seeing our income increase significantly in that. But the other thing that we were not able to do because of time constraints, is this company can, we can do it as well, but we just didn't have the staff. We can access, from the state, we can get what they call state tapes. And they take tapes that show all the people that had Albion zip codes and what they reported to the state. We can match that electronically to our system to see if all those people filed a return with the city of Albion. And of course, we have to cut out, you know, we know, we recognize that the zip code goes outside the city, but we can define the boundaries, the way the software is designed, we can set the city limits, so it's pretty accurate. And by looking at seeing what people file at the state, that allows us then to see all the people that live outside the city that are, worked in the city and, and file with the state that, you know, made X number of dollars with, in the city of Albion, but they didn't file a return here. So, we're able to catch a lot of people that aren't filing in that manner. And then the other addition with the, the services of this company, they help enough cities around the state that, and, and the cities work together pretty good too. So again, like Mayor mentioned, if you work in the city but live outside the city, you pay half something to city of Albion, maybe you, or a half percent. Maybe you live in, or Battle Creek or somewhere that also has the income tax, because you live there, you got to pay half something. So, I mean, we, we have ways with getting in touch with the neighboring cities to make sure that people are paying the full 1%, if need be, you know, depending on where they live, where they work. So, it's, it's a lengthy process and it's hard for us to kind of do it all on our own. With the assistance of this company, we're able to do that much, much better because their software can, you know, do all that electronically, make all the comparisons electronically, so that helps significantly. And did that answer your question?
Yes. So, so basically, just to summarize what you're saying is that you, you looked at what we were using, you looked at the, what the state provided, you're, you know, you recommended a council that we stick with, the company we're working with, because of all the reasons you described. When, I guess my last question is, when, when can you give us an estimate of when it's going to be like working full-fledged, having caught up, and then?
Okay, I'll back up a little bit to what you were saying. When the state launched this with Detroit, they wanted to do Detroit first as a trial city, and they, that was in 2014, they said they would not start with the city of Detroit until their 2016 year had ended. If other cities wanted to come, come aboard after that, there would be an 18, that's the other thing with the state. The state wants at least 18 months' notice lead time to prepare. So, well, that was one reason we didn't consider the state, is with this other company, they were able to come in immediately, there's no waiting. So, so part of it was, we really couldn't even gone to the state at the time that we wanted to because of the state requiring such a long lead time. But again, with all these other factors, it was kind of a no-brainer which way we wanted, we wanted to go. And we've had a working relationship with this company since 2002, 2003, something like that. So, so we were familiar with them anyway and knew their pricing and knew they were willing to work with us, and they helped us out before when the state kind of pulled the rug out from, from under us. So, I think there was a lot of factors as to why we chose this company. And as far as when we start, should start seeing things turn around, I think towards the end of this year, second half of this year, I think we're going to start seeing things pick up a lot. Like I said, we're all, already getting a lot of calls, people asking about letters they're receiving for some of these old, I mean, some of them are older, you know, returns that they didn't pay on and stuff, so we're starting to see some more of that already, and I think by the end of, maybe even third quarter of this year, we could start seeing. And I'll start tracking that and I'll bring you guys the reports on that as we progress.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from council? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to Item C, Discussion slash Approval of 608 Austin Avenue. Director Tracy.
John Tracy, Director of Planning, Building, and Code. I've asked Krista Edwards to come in this evening too and talk a little bit about demolitions. You've received the information there about the $4,000 for abatement of the asbestos as was found in the structure. The remaining part of this, after that is removed, then would be the demolition of the rest of the structure. The Calhoun County Land Bank is preparing to put out RFP for bids for a number of properties here within, what the next week? What the next week? I've talked to Krista about the possibility of us putting this building in with others since they have a refined process of putting out RFPs and also getting a better price with a number of buildings rather than just one at a time. So, what I'm asking is if the council will allow us to do this. The land bank is offering for us to be able to do this with just what it costs for staff time. City, of course, will still pay the amount for the demolition, but undoubtedly, we're looking at a cost that would be less than if we were putting it out separate. And then it would be in the same, basically the same time manner if we put out our own RFP, so.
Councilmember, French Councilmember Barnes?
Thank you. Who owns this property?
This is privately owned by an individual by the last name of Reynolds. It is not, there are no taxes due on it, so it's not a property.
What?
This is the individual sued that's in the military.
Okay. I think you may not. I haven't been trying to figure out what the bearing is on that, on my question, but.
We haven't been able to do any collection efforts because she's protected by the Civil Service.
Oh, I see. So he, so he or she owns the city money?
We have a demo work on the property, but we can't really do anything because it's still an act of military.
I see. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
And we do have other properties that need to be addressed too that are not on a list for tax foreclosure. If this works out well, then the hope is to be able to address more properties through the city before they go back on taxes, or that are not going to go back on taxes and get some areas cleaned up that we've been asked to clean up.
Councilmember Barnes?
I'd like to support John Krishna from the Calhoun County Land Bank to group these properties because we can save money and it would set a precedent where we can move forward these type of endeavors in the future. However, I would like to see, as John met with me earlier today downstairs and we discussed this, to move forward and tear this building down in conjunction with Krista from the Calhoun County Land Bank.
Councilmember French?
So, thank you, Mayor. I'm still a little confused, so I'm, I'm supporting, of course, demolishing properties that are falling down or safety hazard to our citizens. I guess I'm curious as to what comes of the property in the bill after this demolition. Will we be billing the property owner for this since we have a court order to tear down the building?
Correct.
Okay. And, and then presumably, that owner now can then sell a property that is been abated or can develop that property as he or she sees fit, correct?
As long as they, as long as they pay us.
As long as they pay us.
As long as they pay us, yeah.
Just trying to understand the process. Thank you.
The, the one thing that we would be required is that we have a memorandum of understanding between the county and the city.
Okay. Is your plan to bring that back?
Okay, well, we don't have the text for, that's, do you have the, well, Councilmember
Spicer, I was just asking about like the, the text for that, or would that just be a, a simple?
Yeah. We've done it before.
Okay, thank you.
The land bank has managed many projects for the county treasurer, Calhoun County, city of Battle Creek.
Okay.
So we have some sample MOUs that it would come back because we would have to agree upon that. that. Because this is privately owned, I think we just wanna walk through what that looks like, you know, because most of those have been owned by the county treasurer or the county, the county itself. So we would just wanna look at that. But basically, that MOU would outline the roles of each organization and then the responsibilities. So if something came up with this owner, you know, it would be between the city and the owner. We would just basically be acting as your project manager. This project cost that John gave you, the right way remediation, that's based on our current contract with them, which you would be able to just, we'd be able to use if we had a MOU so you wouldn't have to bid out an abatement contractor, you could use, and they're already working in Albion, so it would be okay. And then there's a portion of this structure that they could not go in and test for asbestos. So there's, he's got that here, it's 960 square feet, has to be an asbestos-containing demolition because we couldn't go in or you couldn't go in and find out if there is any asbestos there. So it's a little bit of a trickier demolition, but it's not something that is unique for us, at least. We do a lot of them.
Thank you. Councilmember Spicer.
Thank you, John. You, thank you, Mayor. John, you have one of those voices that starts out strong and trails off and.
Sorry about that.
Can you make it all clear for me? We are planning to demo 608 Austin.
Correct.
With, in the bid process with the land bank.
Correct. They're, they are, they are getting ready to put a RFP for demolitions. We can get started, if, if we have a MOU, we can go ahead and get started with the abatement of the asbestos, but the remainder of it has to go out for bid to take down the structure itself. And we could put in with the Calhoun County Land Bank with their RFP to get a bid on it, which would undoubtedly be substantially less than what we typically would be looking at.
So, thank you, that clears that up. So are we also considering getting in with the land bank for the other properties on Austin Avenue?
What, as we, as we take properties, what the hope would be is, as we can come along, as we can obtain either grant money or money to do demolitions on properties that are personally owned, not, that have not reverted back, that need to come down, with partnering with the land bank would be more feasible and more apt to, be more affordable for the city actually to do that. And that's what I'd like to pursue.
At some point in time, for those of you.
As, as, yes, as we can move forward with them, at some point in time, yes, definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any further questions? Okay, so you just need approval for, to proceed with the, okay. Seeing no further discussion, we've had a motion in a second, we'll just do a roll call vote to authorize that and then have the MOU come back. Clerk Domingo.
Do you have a moment to support?
Yeah.
I move forward.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes, we've approved that unanimously, item C. Item D, set date for Rising Tide meeting, I put that on there. Basically, there was an initial, under the, Emily Pets, who's our contact at the MEDC, had a meeting with, I wanna say, like a group of seven stakeholders. And what we did was, we, we took the list of topics and narrowed them down to about, I think, five. So basically, housing, health and wellness, post-industrial blight, workforce development, and the fifth right now is escaping, I have to look at my notes here. But what, what are, the next step is, and I'm working with her on that, is to bring in the group, both the panelists and I guess the general, the audience that was not on the panel, back to break off into meetings around those issues. And so I think that's gonna be the next component of that. And so the date is gonna be set with her, but we're gonna do that pretty soon, but it is gonna involve, involve that panel of people to discuss those things and to kind of break off into work groups for that. So are there any questions about that? Councilmember Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor. So when you were meeting with Ms. Emily, why was there only just certain people included? Why wasn't there maybe, I know you represent the council, but some of us would have liked to have attended.
But, so with Rising Tide, there's, the city is definitely at the, the helm, but then the state does because they are the other partner, they kind of exert an influence on that. That was, that was her recommendation to me. You know, I had initially suggested a larger thing, but what she, what she, what she wanted to help, to be able to help her to move forward was that smaller group to, to take, because she had pretty much well documented what was discussed at the panel. So we have that and actually, what I can do is get, make sure the council gets a copy of that, because I think I still have that, but she, she passed out the whole list of what was discussed. So I, and we've talked, I know the concern is to make sure that, you know, we're not missing out on, you know, especially, we've talked about youth issues, and so I, that is in the forefront of my mind. So I think that that was done because that was a request from our, our state partner, but the, the larger group is gonna be looped back in. Yes, Councilmember Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, the reason why I asked that is because I, I'll just speak for myself. I had a different perspective when I was at that meeting about the concerns that our governor wanted to hear. So that is the reason why I'm asking that. It's not to attack anybody, but it was, I heard, I think I heard something different than what others may have heard.
Okay.
So that was only, my only reason for asking that.
Okay. No, I, I understand that. Once that's set, so I'll make sure the council gets that list, and then once that's set, the council will probably be involved with that because you all were part of the audience. So that's just a brief update on that. Are there any other questions? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to E, set a date for annual cleanup day. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Director Lenison.
Good evening, Council and Mayor.
Good evening.
Jim Lenison, Director of Public Services. I believe that we have it slated for the last Saturday in July, which I believe is the 28th, because I recall.
And, and I'm sure we're gonna, I'm sure there's probably gonna be like a flyer made up.
Yeah, we'll get it out.
Okay.
And we've already coordinated with the Calhoun County Recycling Center as well, and I believe the electronic pickup will happen again and the tire pickup will happen again as well.
Yes, they're gonna do tires and we're, I've got a meeting in the next week or so about electronics recycling as well.
Okay. And sites?
It'll be the same to Catch and Field and Harris Park.
Okay. Any, any questions from council? Councilmember Lawler, Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Do you think we could get the, the recycling for the tires and the electronics as soon as I can? Because one of the things, I'll tell you what I'm trying to do, is to get people in my precinct to help, since we have so many elderly, I'm trying to get people in our precinct that are trustworthy to help with getting things out of the, transported from one place to another. So I have a couple inquiries about who would like to help with that. So it's just like, the more I know where these designated places and dates are, I can pass it on if you can help me with it.
I will take care of that for you. I will email that information to you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Last year, didn't we have funding available to cover some of the costs, up to a certain amount? Is that available this year?
I believe, as I recall, it was a year ago, so I may stand corrected on this. I wanna say that we put 1,800 bucks, $2,000 towards it, as I remember. And I have that meeting, as I stated earlier, I wanna say it's a week after next with the electronics recycling place, as well as one of the county representatives to discuss that very issue, and I'm assuming that's what it's about.
Thanks.
So I'll bring that information back when I have it.
Thank you. So right now, we just have the motion approved July 28 and with our standard arrangement. Seeing no further discussion from council, I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes, the council has unanimously approved July 28 as the cleanup day for the city of Albion. Item F, discussion Economic Development Corporation, Albion Redevelopment Community Corporation arrangement. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. So I ask that this agenda item be added tonight for discussion. I'm gonna start off by saying I'm very happy to see President Disler here, happy to see Dr. Dobins, and I'm happy to see Amy Depress present tonight. It, it's hard to come to a mutual understanding when you don't have all parties in the room, right? So thank you for being here. So at our May 7 meeting, I believe, during council member comments, I expressed concern about ARC being a private entity, investment group, and EDC being a public entity. And I think it's very important to define where ARC's vision ends and EDC's vision I, I wanna get a consensus tonight from council, basically, to reach out to the EDC board and set up a joint meeting for a conversation. The main concern that I have it myself and I hear it over and over again from residents all over this community, not just from specific areas, but all over. Partnerships are great and welcomed and encouraged. The concern here is that you have a private investment group that's financially intertwined with a public entity. Because their, the EDC director's salary, half, 50%, is paid by this private investment group. That position, and Amy, my hat goes off to you because I don't know how you juggle both, that allows access to public resources as a private investment group that other investors just don't have. Okay? So that is a concern that I have, that is a concern that I have heard many people talk about and raise. For whatever reason, they probably would never come out publicly and say it, but privately, it's, it's talked about a lot. So I feel as council, we're the policymaking body of this community, and I think it would be grossly negligent for us to just ignore this and not address it, not have a conversation about it, and hopefully get some understanding and some clarity and clear some hearts and some minds and move forward. It's gonna take everybody in this community coming together to move forward. And when you have concerns and people are not informed or they're misinformed or, you know, it, there's an appearance of some actions that are causing people to have distrust, it's hard to move together as one. We've gotta have tough conversations. We're gonna have to address some things in order to move forward. So I'm asking council for a consistence, consensus to see if, if we're interested in having a conversation with our EDC or inviting them to participate in a discussion.
Councilmember Barnes.
Well, council did approve this arrangement. Four of us were here when we did this. Mayor Domingo was our mayor, and we had these candid conversations at the table of the EDC building. I also researched this situation because I had concerns. I contacted the Calhoun County lawyer and he verified that these models are legal and they are successful around the country. Mayor Domingo did have some concerns concerning the director's financial payout, and we did discuss that with the EDC board. The four of us were there at that time. I did sit down with Amy in her office and shared these concerns. This is a model that's growing around the country and it has been successful, but the checkpoint is that, and I'm gonna use the term insider trading, that integrity has to be shown and established. And Sonia's right, council should be aware of the relationship. And Amy and I, I think I did use the word insider trading, that's just my term that I'm using, that if everybody followed the rule, the goal and the vision of this endeavor to be under the same roof, there would be no problems because it's more convenient, it's cost-saving, and that's why they bought that building, so they could cut back costs. I'm gonna try not to get into the, to the diversity part, but right now, this is a model that's being used, and there's nothing wrong with council having this question to sign your hand. That's why we have EDC reports, that's why we have the mayor attending regular meetings with the EDC and the EDC coming to report to us concerning the situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember French.
Thank you. I think we need to clear up some misconceptions, I think. I think the Albion Reinvestment Corporation is a nonprofit entity.
It's so private.
It, it accepts support from any and everyone who would be interested in supporting that vision. I think, I think Amy can speak to the mission of ARC. I think we've all heard the mission of ARC. And I think it's, it's a mechanism by which blighted downtown properties in a historic district have a chance for having businesses in them. And I think that without outside help through these supporters, we find it very difficult, if not impossible, to bring about the transformation of the downtown as we would like to see it. The amount of money each individual storefront requires for remediation is better than a half a million dollars each, and there is not a business model out there in a town our size that can take on the half a million dollars to bring a building up to code, plus another half a million dollars to, to put in the infrastructure inside to make your business run and be able to pay that off along with mortgage payments and make that business a viable business in the long term. So I think that this is a mechanism by which the Reinvestment Corporation can have properties and, and work with funding agencies, whether it be MEDC or MISTDA or, or private citizens wishing to support the effort to bring about this renovation so that we can encourage all business owners, regardless of any experience or regardless of their wealth, to bring them into the downtown. And we've seen some successes already, and we hope to see more successes with this. So I would encourage that if people wish information, then conversations absolutely need to happen because I think there is a lot of misinformation out there. Thank you.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. So basically, I wanna... Thank you, Mayor. Um, so basically, I wanna just kinda respond to, um, councilmember French, and, um, probably some thoughts that I can kinda hear. Uh, my purpose in raising this issue, um, is not to hinder progress or deter what's going on downtown. I think what's going on downtown is, is awesome. Um, we need to rejuvenate our downtown district. The concern is the financial intertwining between ARC and EDC, and the appearance of a conflict of interest. Um, I understand you said ARC is a nonprofit, okay? Um, so any investor can join ARC? Okay, that's great. That's something I hadn't heard until tonight, so it's great to know. Um, if we can get the information out there on how investors can join ARC, I think that'd be awesome. Um, but again, I think it's worth raising this issue, to have a conversation, have a dialogue. People can get an understanding, myself included. Um, I've attended some EDC meetings, um, not nearly as many as I wish to, because seven o'clock in the morning, seven thirty in the morning, I'm at work. So, the timing is bad for me, but I make, I have missed work to attend EDC meetings because I was really interested in knowing what was going on. And I sit on council. So, if I'm, if I'm kinda feeling curious, um, I know others are, because I've heard it. So, what I'm saying is, we need to have a conversation, and I encourage us to, to reach out to EDC for that conversation. There's no, there's no other way to get an understanding. Like I said earlier, it's going to take the entire community to come together in order to move Albion forward, and I think everybody wants to see that. And sometimes it takes tough, tough conversations, uncomfortable conversations, and uncomfortable situations to occur, um, for people to just get on the same page. So, let's reach out, or let's see if, if council, because this is not an action item, but I just wanted to, um, bring it up and see if council is on board with, um, setting up that, that meeting moving forward, so.
So, one comment, I, I'm gonna piggyback on something councilmember Barnes said in, in relative to, to rules. I, I think, um, and I, and I wanna commend council, uh, 'cause I know sometimes these discussions can be sensitive, and I think that, you know, we're having a really frank and respectful conversation, so I wanna commend council for that. Um, I, I would agree that, from, from what I see, the situation where, um, for whatever reasons, the infrastructure, especially the buildings downtown, over decades have been allowed to deteriorate, right? There's, if you, if you have businesses and they're not thriving in the economy, um, then they're not gonna be able sometimes to make those investments to keep the buildings, um, together. And to the point where, um, one of the things I always point to, and I think, uh, Dr. Shaheen is one of the, um, ARC board members, and, and one of the, uh, um, I guess major supporters of even the hotel downtown, made the comment that, um, it was the energy and initiative of residents to save the bone that encouraged him to see that, you know, this is a community worth investing in. And so I think that there's a lot of positive energy, um, and I, I don't oppose any of, basically, an attempt to basically shore up the buildings. I think that's what my understanding is, is we don't want to have these, basically, when we have to demolish houses, we don't wanna have to have a big missing piece in, in downtown. So, I think at the, the very base of it, there's an attempt to rescue the buildings from collapsing. So, that's kind of the basic thing. The next thing is to make sure that there are, um, successful businesses that can go into a refurbished space. So, I think the, in theory, the idea, is a good idea. Uh, I think, going back to what I was saying about councilmember Barnes, when he said, I think the question is about, you know, like Robert Frost said, good fences make good, uh, good neighbors. And so, I think it's when we have good, um, clear boundaries about where, um, how time is allocated, how staffing time is allocated, I think that's very helpful. Um, and, you know, I sit on the EDC board, um, so I think that communicating that would be very helpful, and, and, and I think that, uh, I think item H is going to bring that up. I'm, I'm, I'm not sure that that was fairly represented by, um, some of the comments earlier, uh, by, by councilmember Spicer's intent in putting that on the agenda, H. Um, but I think it's all intertwined. I think the, I, I would repeat what, uh, councilmember Brown said, that, you know, a lot of times you do hear things, and it comes from all, ethnic income backgrounds, about concerns, about, um, access. I think that's really the question, is about access, and, and, you know, as things improve, um, who has access? And so, obviously, um, it's not lost to me, and I'm gonna wrap it up, it's not lost to me that there are people who are making investment, um, who might not been, who might not get a return on that investment, right? So, we, we're since, I'm sensitive to that. Um, but then I think what we're doing tonight is a responsible thing for us to do as the public body, to make sure that the, the portion of, of funding that is paid by, um, taxpayers or from, you know, property taxes, that those things are accounted for, and that we're being, um, fair and wise stewards of, uh, tax dollars. So, I, I would not object to having that conversation. I know in the past, we have had, um, joint meetings with either planning, planning commission, for example, or EDC board. So, um, unless there's a major objection, you know, I, I, I can reach out to do that. Um, would there be an objection to that from anyone on council? Yeah, I mean, it's, it, 'cause basically, and this could be a, a study session, so we could be in Luddington or something like that, um, but, um, councilmember French.
So, I have no objection. I just think it's, uh, eight twenty, and we have everybody that's here, that's here. Why not have the discussion now?
If I understand, if I remember, I think she was asking for a joint meeting with the EDC board and council. That was the request, I think. Um, okay. Um, well, I'll, I'll work on that, and, uh, hopefully we'll have something this week scheduled, or, or to at least make that contact. Thank you all. Um, we'll move on to G, uh, Discussion Assistant Advisory Committee, Community Development. Um, I asked for this to be on there. I know in the past, we've had, um, we've established these, um, by authority of the charter, and, uh, they, uh, one of them was to help us through the website, another was to, to deal with sustainability issues. What I, what I'd like to do, um, and this is kind of a long-term thing, we, we had a really great discussion for, with, with the, uh, panel that was assembled for the, the Rising Tide Initiative. Um, and so even after that, um, and that's a year-long program, but even after that, that, that goes away, I'd like to continue to have that level of discussion. Um, what, what I'm basically advising council, um, is about is, is my, um, desire to do that. Um, and, you know, usually these, you know, they would have to apply it like any other board, but, um, the point would be to have that ongoing conversation about, um, development of commu, in our community, and then basing, making sure that we're, kept abreast of, of these concerns, because one of the things that, uh, it was a good match, actually, but the, the, the council approved a comprehensive plan that really focused on housing issues, and that really was the standout issue that came up in the discussion at Project Rising Tide, was this, um, lack of, uh, um, accessible housing. So, I think that this is gonna be an opportunity to, to keep those discussions going, um, even after the rising tide. So, what I'm gonna work with, uh, Attorney Harkness to, to draft some language, um, and bring that back to council. So, I just wanna make council aware of that. H, Discussion of Cultural Diversity in Downtown Business Ownership. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna, because councilmember Spicer asked for the agenda, we're gonna do it, councilmember Spicer, then councilmember Barnes. Thank you.
Um, in the spirit of transparency, I'm sharing that, um, I had this conversation, short, brief, with, um, a former, our former city manager, and, um, we, we did not explore it, and we did not take it, um, to any length, um, when we discussed it. So, um, I, I was just bringing it to council to see if there is a possibility, um, and maybe, maybe there isn't, to establish, um, designation for, um, minority, a section of downtown at some, I don't know what section, some point to, for minority businesses. And minorities, um, does not necessarily have to be racial. So, um, I don't, I don't know if Chief Kip, I don't think we gave them directions to move forward, to research. I don't even know if this is possible. It's just something that I had a conversation about, and I wanted to further explore. It may not even be, um, possible, or something that we want to do. So, to, um, uh, basically, uh, say not to move forward, I, I think that it, it's worth exploring. We can later decide, oh, this is not something we want to do, um, it's not an official for our downtown, our community. Um, so I think I just wanted us to discuss it and maybe get information on it. I don't know if it's even possible, but I wanted to bring it to council, and because of the conversation I had with former manager and a couple other people. So, I guess this is something to decide if we wanna look into or not.
Okay. Councilmember Barnes, and then I'll have a comment.
Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, addressing this item, for me, I've been here eight years, and I've seen many agenda items. And this one is the most ridiculous one I've ever seen. I think it has no place on this agenda. We are a public entity, purchasing buildings downtown, our private ownership, nonprofit, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, as far as diversity, my first turn on council, the state of Michigan came into, uh, Albion. We had meetings at the Ismen House, public meetings. The state of Michigan was trying to loan thirty thousand dollars to anyone who would purchase property downtown. They would lead certify the apartments upstairs if the owner would maintain the storefront business for at least two years. After two years, the loan would be forgiven and written off. I pleaded with minorities and black people to purchase that property at that time. I could get no relatives, pastors, businessmen, anyone to be involved. I told them it would be a goldmine. Uh, to get into any area to purchase, um, property, uh, realty property, you need financial backing, you have to have the ability to sustain the property, you have to have a business plan, you have to have networking, and you have to have, uh, resourcing. It has nothing to do with black or white. And where are these diverse people? I mean, have, have they contacted anyone that they wanted to get into those buildings? I've been black sixty-two years. You can't tell me nothing about being black. All they gonna do in Albion is black people sing, "We Shall Overcome."
Shame.
Yes.
Point of.
Uh, point of order.
Yes, point of order.
What, so, can you?
Let me finish. I'm talking about the item of diversity in buildings.
Well, there, there was a point of order, so I have to ask what was the point of order to rule on.
French was first.
I, I felt like it was getting off topic and relating negative comments towards someone on council, so I just wanted to.
I, I, I do believe that that was.
Who did I make the negative comment to?
So.
If you felt that, French. Who, who was it directing to?
Can you?
No one. I'm talking about downtown businesses and black people.
Okay. Well, I think that's the issue, is you, you can't speak.
Well, diversity is what? Black, red, yellow, white?
Please allow me a rule, okay?
Oh, my God, y'all are stupid.
I, I, I agree that some of the comments could be interpreted as disparaging, so you can keep it to addressing
Okay.
the, the issue that councilmember Spicer was bringing before the council.
Yes. I questioned the EDC, ARC, EDA under one roof. My research shows from around the country, other cities have the same model. And I did talk with the Calhoun County lawyer, and he verified these models as legal and successful in practice. Also, I complained about Dobbins, the nonprofit EDC and the Calhoun County Land Bank concerning the property, several buildings at or near Cas through the South Superior, and through Calhoun County officials, the situation was made whole. Thus, Albion College and the supporting Cas plan for this progression of downtown with being discriminatory and racist or biased in effect at all. Ninety percent of Austin Avenue, the black historical district, is black-owned and not operated. Five black churches are within a half mile,
Point of order.
eight hundred and eighty yards of the corner.
Point of order.
Okay.
Do nothing to promote cleanup
Point of order.
or rebuild their own community.
Councilmember Barnes, one second. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. We're, we're, councilmember Barnes, with all due respect, you totally off-topic now. Um, the item is downtown, and you've gone to Austin Avenue and the churches, so.
Okay, all right, I'll correct that.
Okay.
Okay. Now, um, Albion College, ARC, and nonpro, other nonprofits, financial backers, had leadership. They had leadership with the ability to lead, with the ability to get people to follow them, networking and resourcing. Their alumni, some of their trustees. If you look downtown, you have the hotel footprint from Albion College. You got the Luddington Building downtown. You got the Peabody Project, the Malibu Period. Albion College has a footprint on all of that. That's private. Downtown, we're talking about downtown business and diversity. Now, I got, I get ten minutes. Now, all of a sudden, this council wants to talk about black people getting buildings downtown. You have to have the financial backing. Council has no say other than writing off on some of the, the, uh, tax situations, such as we did for the Peabody. That's private and public. And I told y'all a long time ago, and y'all thought I was crazy. Y'all can't keep trying to alienate Albion College and white people, and it's futile.
Oh.
Point of order.
Order?
Okay. Yeah, I'm gonna deal with that.
I think y'all agree.
Are you, are you finished?
Well, if y'all gonna stop me, I'll stop, but it's a new point. Y'all keep, you're, you're being racist, and, and you know you are.
Point of order. This is so.
Trying to hide behind racist.
I'm, I'm about to speak.
That's all y'all doing.
So, okay. Yeah, you finished?
You the one.
Whoa, point, Mr. Barnes.
Well, Mr. Spicer. They keep talking about him.
Please, please, please stop it. Thank you. Okay. Okay. Point.
That's all I'm doing.
Okay.
Motion, can we take a recess, please?
Okay, one second. Okay, I got it. Okay, so, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. So.
Can I, can we take a recess?
No, I'm, I'm gonna, no, okay, thank you. What I interpret, you know, councilmember Spicer has discussed this with me, um, and she did mention that Dr. Mitchell had actually brought this up in front of council in public. Um, it's no different, you know, I, I think there is one question we'd have to ask Attorney Harkness about, uh, I know there was an amendment passed to the constitution, I wanna say in early two thousands regarding consideration of those things, but I do know that, um, there are many a times when, for example, with the grant that we received, or that we're in the process of, of going through regarding the repavement of, uh, Irwin Ave. Uh, there's a clause in there where it has to benefit, you know, I think fifty-one percent, uh, low income, right? Um, so there are, there are, um, mechanisms that public bodies can make to ensure that, uh, access and, and development is accessible, um, to a diverse, um, segment of the community. Um, I don't think in any way, and I wanna be very clear, that what councilmember Spicer was asked is inappropriate. The question, the question becomes, uh, the question becomes, the question becomes, uh, what, under law, we're allowed to do, uh, but asking the question does not, uh, is not a, inappropriate. Um, I, I think, I think the concern is, is if there is a way under law to increase access. It's the same thing, when, when we had, uh, the facilitator here for the city manager search last week. Um, I, if I recall correctly, there was a request to make sure that, uh, entities that, uh, are affiliated with diverse populations in the profession were included in that. Um, so I, 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 I'm confused about the, uh, kinda escalation between two points when it comes to that. So, what we can do, which I think would make this, uh, move us forward quickly, is to, uh, ask the attorney to do some research on that, um, about what can be done. I know that there are cities sometimes that have, for example, um, kind of community benefits ordinances, and they can do certain things like that. So I want to be very clear that I don't think that Councilmember Spicer did anything appropriate. I think it's fair to ask and, and depending on the question we receive, it's, it's like any other thing. None, no one on the council is an expert on every issue of municipal law or policy. So to, to ask the question actually be irresponsible not to explore. So, Councilmember French?
Thank you, Mayor. I think that, that what we've got in Albion is opportunity. And I think it's all of us together, regardless of our skin color, regardless of our socioeconomic background or experience, to be part of a conversation about what we need to be doing to help us be better as a community, to revitalize our, our town in general, our downtown with respect to the Albion Investment Corporation and the EDC, our industrial base, our residential base in our downtown. This council has talked an awful lot over the last six months, a year, two years, about the historic black downtown, which I have no experience with. But I would like us to be thinking about how we can use language that talks about our, our urban centers rather than to use race as a defining, as a defining locator. We are a diverse community and that diversity is spread throughout our city. Our poverty is spread out through our city. Our, our racial diversity is spread throughout our city. And I would like us to start using language that is more inclusive and talk about our urban centers. We have a number of them. We have Eaton Street Quarter. We have a historical urban center on Austin Avenue that has fallen on hard times. And then we have the downtown. And I would just like us as a council to be thinking in those terms rather than along racial terms. And I think, again, to reemphasize what's being attempted downtown with ARC and the EDC and the college and, and private and public funds is to reimagine our downtown where everyone would be welcome with a business plan and resources. There's consulting services that are available for people to help people of, of all backgrounds to come and enter into that business environment that is our downtown and is our city. So I would welcome all of those conversations. Thank you.
And I, and just to follow up, I'll say two things because I don't want to spill the beans on that. But, you know, I, I, I was fortunate enough to have a very interesting conversation today. And I won't go into too much detail about that, but I don't see any difference from, between the conversation I had today and the spirit of what Councilmember Spicer is asking the council to do. I think Albion is in a great position and has some great opportunities potentially. So I, I, I think that, again, I want to be very clear here that the, the, the point here is to improve the lots and opport, and I say lots, the, the, the status and position of residents in our community. I, I don't think it has anything to do with blocking off, I think, but we're, and like I said, I'm gonna ask the council, allow us just to get some information about what other communities do legally, what were the bounds of that. But I, I, I think that the council as the policymaking body of the city is entrusted with kind of looking at for the welfare of the community. And I think that this was a question about that. So I, I think to, to, to attribute motives to a colleague is not in keeping with what we're here for. We're here to seek clarity and, and move the city forward. So Councilmembers, Councilmember Reed?
I think Mr. French hit it on the head. Business plan and resources. The color is green. It's not any color but green.
Absolutely.
Money buys you whatever it is you want. So whoever wants to buy buildings, get the green money and the business plan and handle it.
Yeah. And, and, and I'm aware of that and what, one of the things I'll say, I want to move us forward, is when you learn more about kind of the history of urban planning and zoning and things like that and, and how some, sometimes those demographics were used to, you know, deny bank loans and those kinds of things. I think there is a history where, that has influenced resources. So I, I'm not saying that our, our job is to fix every historic wrong, but I, but I do think that that's a fair question to ask. So I'm gonna, if the council is having a problem with that, I'm gonna ask that we consult with the attorney before our next meeting just to see what state provisions and stuff we can do, what different resources we have to address. Because like Councilmember Spicer said, it, it can be broadly construed. So seeing no further discussion, we'll move on. Thank you. Item I, request approval, resolution number twenty eighteen dash eighteen, a resolution opposing House Bill forty-one fifty-eight. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Support.
Okay.
So I'll be very brief. This, um, this was an issue that was actually brought to my attention by one of my colleagues that is the legislative prosecutor over in Wayne County Prosecutor's Office. There's a, a process that's used in the state of Michigan, it's a concept known as civil asset forfeiture. Basically, the concept is when somebody, there's, there's kind of two different fronts. There's a controlled substance asset forfeiture and an omnibus asset forfeiture. The, the general idea is that certain state statutes allow the state or municipalities to seize the assets of individuals who have violated either the Controlled Substance Act or the Omnibus Forfeiture Act. And basically, the idea is that you're taking the ill-gotten property and monies and proceeds from, for example, drug dealers and you turn around and give them to law enforcement to combat violations of the Controlled Substance Act. The amendment that's going through, well, I should say, there's, there's one legislator in particular that's trying to dismantle forfeiture in the state of Michigan and kind of has done it over a series of incremental changes. And the, the proposed resolution, or excuse me, the proposed change that they're trying to make right now is, is making this process contingent on having a criminal conviction. I can tell you, since I took over as city attorney in twenty-eleven, we've done quite a bit of asset forfeiture in the city of Albion. I think that's largely because, and Chief Kip can speak to that, Albion happens to have a corridor of I ninety-four between Chicago and Detroit. There's a lot of drug activity. There's a lot of bulk currency coming through. And, and again, Chief Kip can speak to this, but we've actually, through our seizures, paid for a staff member to solely do this on our staff. And it's been a huge help in combating drugs and other crimes in the city of Albion. And this particular bill is really going to impede our ability to do this in the future. So I know that the state, or excuse me, Wayne County is opposing this. I know the Sheriff's Association is opposing it. I know that, I believe the Michigan Chiefs of Police are opposing this. And the Wayne County Legislative Prosecutor has asked that I would bring this to you and ask you to support opposing this particular bill.
Councilmember Brown, Councilmember Lawler?
So to, okay, first off, thank you, Mayor. You said that our public safety had seized enough money to fund a position to do this. I didn't, what was this?
So, and, and again, Chief Kip can probably explain that point a little bit better than I, because he handles the budget.
I, we don't fund the position particularly through the asset forfeiture, but the asset forfeiture allows us to have the money to do the things in that position that we normally couldn't do through our regular budget. Whether it be controlled substance purchases or evidence forfeiture handling money. For a while, it was paying for Evans where we store a lot of the stuff that we seize. And so without that extra money to do those enforcement type of actions, it would be difficult for us to continue to do some of the things that we do.
Okay, and then I, do I need to go ahead and come back?
If you can finish, if you...
So I'm trying, I want to make sure I'm understanding what this, okay. So what's being proposed at the state level and you're asking council to oppose, do a, a resolution opposing is that if there are possessions or drug money that seized, absent a criminal conviction, you can't just, like you, if the person isn't criminally convicted, then you can't just hold that. The person has to be criminally convicted in order for you to keep it.
Right. So what they're basically saying is, and, and just so you can have kind of a, a bit of context on it, so five years ago, the standard to complete the, the, the burden of proof that the state or municipalities had to meet in order to do a forfeiture was what's called preponderance of the evidence. Is it more likely than not? Fifty point one percent to forty-nine point nine? Thank you. A long one there. Percent? About two years ago, they raised it to what's called a clear and convincing evidence standard, which is basically the highest civil standard you can have, all done by the same legislator. And now, the same legislator is saying, well, no, let's make it proof beyond a reasonable doubt, essentially by requiring a criminal conviction, which really doesn't happen in the context of a civil case. Because this is a civil, civil forfeiture, it's not a criminal thing. So yes, the, the short answer to your question is, if the individual is not convicted beyond a reasonable doubt of the criminal offense, the civil asset forfeiture wouldn't be allowed to proceed. What I would say is, I think the problem inherent with that is oftentimes there's ample evidence that there's been violations of, for example, the Controlled Substance Act. Maybe it doesn't rise to proof beyond a reasonable doubt for purposes of a criminal conviction, but there's enough where the property should be taken and not returned because the dots are pretty well in a row. Does that answer your question?
Well, and the other part of that...
Yes?
The other part of that is, giving away our secrets of how we do things, but...
You don't, we don't want to do that.
Well, a, a lot of times when, when we do a drug raid and, and we seize these assets from the person, they don't end up getting criminally charged because they go to work for us. And so there's never any criminal charges that go on. And as a result of them going to work for us, we get additional information, we solve more crimes, and that's a continuing process. If this were the case, that may not happen at that point.
So you'd have less informants?
Correct.
So there's way more than why I want to...
But that's how the process works everywhere, so. Councilmember Lawler?
Thank you, Mayor. So to just put it in a, I'll just say lame in term for our viewers, because I know we have some viewers looking directly at this proposal. So to say what you, you're basically saying, if it's my car, if it's Councilmember Spicer's car and I have the drugs, you can take her car and you can sell it before I even get convicted. Is that what you're saying?
Under the, under the, under the current legislation, you don't have to have a conviction to complete a forfeiture.
But no, that is not the case because an innocent owner's property cannot be seized.
So...
She would have to have knowledge that you were doing what you were doing with the car in order for it to be seized.
So let me give, I guess, the council a better example of the problem that this particular amendment creates. So in twenty fourteen, or it might have been twenty thirteen, we actually did an asset forfeiture in conjunction with Calhoun County. And in that particular case, it started as a traffic stop. The individual went on a three-county chase and ended up crashing into a car. When he was arrested, the deputy that arrested him found, I believe it was just slightly over eleven thousand dollars wrapped in a plastic bag, sitting on top of a loaded handgun in the center console. He had more currency on him. He had several digital scales in the car with him. There was drug residue on the digital scales. There were baggies in the car, things of that nature. It was very clear that he had been engaging in violations of the Controlled Substance Act. He was charged with operating while intoxicated, fleeing and eluding, carrying a concealed weapon, things of that nature. There was no evidence that they could charge him with those facts for violation of the Controlled Substance Act. But in that particular case, it was clear from a civil standpoint that he had been violating the Controlled Substance Act and that he had obtained that money through a violation of the Controlled Substance Act. In this, if, if this particular legislation were to pass, situations like that, we wouldn't be able to forfeit the money. In fact, we litigated that case up to the Court of Appeals and we actually set a new precedent with the Court of Appeals. They ruled in our favor that it was a good, it was a good forfeiture. So, I mean, in, in that particular situation, I mean, those are the types of situations where we need to take those assets and use it to combat crime rather than, you know, having a situation where the individual is not charged with a Controlled Substance Act violation and they get their property back.
So, so one question I have, so, I'm sure you're aware of this. Very, very early in my, in my career on council, my tenure on council, this took place, and I, I was in precinct three. I guess maybe two homes were raided. And I'm, I'm assuming that that took place under the, the more lenient standards, right? The preponderance standards, right? And so one of the things, you know, and we've had this discussion before, this has been before council before. One of the concerns I've always had is, so what, what is the typical timeframe between the asset forfeiture and then the, basically, I would say the liquidization, I guess, whatever, just transferring the, whether, you know, sometimes it could be money, but then sometimes it's, you know, a two thousand dollar flat screen, it could be a, yada, yada, yada. So what, how, and, and, and I think, like I said, I think we need to, the council needs to be, you know, really thoughtful about it because that, part of that supplies revenue for the city. And so I guess in the most extreme and kind of perverse scenario, if, if, like, I'm not saying this is the case, but if everybody was an informant, then it becomes almost like, you know, as they're informing as part of the process, they're collecting assets, we're raiding them to fund, you know, our public work. So, you know, if, if the point is to shut down, which I don't know if that ever happened, shut down the criminal enterprise instead of basically making it a, a component of our, our revenue stream. So I guess my question is, is how, how long does it usually take us from seizing to turning it into a line item? Like what?
Well, it depends on, on a variety of factors. There's, there's two different types of asset forfeiture. There's administrator forfeiture and there's judicial forfeiture. Administrator forfeiture applies if, if the value of the assets is fifty thousand dollars or less. If a claim of interest is not filed within a certain period of time and it's under that value, we don't have to litigate the case.
Okay.
If a claim of interest is filed or if the property is more than fifty thousand dollars, we have to file an action in the circuit court. The typical timeframe that used to be the standard was roughly ninety days after the claim of interest was filed. We actually, that Court of Appeals case that I mentioned, we actually set a new standard where depending upon what, if anything, is going on with the county prosecutor as it relates to the criminal charges, can also dictate and delay how long it can be until we file. Basically, the way that the statute's written is if there's a pending criminal charge and the forfeiture is being completed by a local municipality, the local municipality can't proceed with the forfeiture unless the county prosecutor gives the okay. If the county prosecutor doesn't give the okay, we can't do anything until the criminal case is concluded.
But we still hold the...
We would still hold it
Okay.
until the criminal case is, is concluded. Usually, if we're able to, usually it's been my experience that Mr. Gilbert's office usually, almost always, gives us the immediate go-ahead as long as we hand out the property pending resolution of the criminal case. So typical civil case, problem on something like this usually gets resolved in about six months.
So, and I guess really boils down to, because I, you know, I want to be conscious of time, but I, my, my assumption is, I guess, getting straight to the point, is that the legislator who introduces has certain kind of several liberties, concerns, right?
The legislator that introduces is very much a libertarian on this issue.
Okay, okay.
And I, while I, while I'm not, I can't speculate as to the motives, I, he has made it clear that it's his intent... that it's his intent to try to dismantle such a forfeiture mistake in Michigan.
Okay.
Which I wanted to bring to the council's attention because since the city is so involved in this, it's not gonna be a good thing for the city of Albion. Not from, necessarily just from a financial standpoint, but from public safety's ability to continue to address these criminal issues, it's going to happen in a negative way.
So, oh, I'm sorry.
So, so we better understand civil forfeiture and how it came about as well. The basic general rule of drug trafficking is the drugs and the money never come in contact with each other. So the drugs go one way, the money goes the other way, and they never come in contact. The reason asset forfeiture came out separate from the criminal trial was you can seize the money, but there's no evidence of crime occurring. There have been issues with that, and Michigan's done a lot lately to address those issues. Deputy Chief Kern and I both testified in front of, uh, congressional subcommittee here in Michigan, referenced this a couple of years ago. We've made some changes, as in changing it from preponderance of the evidence to.
Clear and convincing.
Clear and convincing evidence, which is a higher step for us to be able to prove what was happening. There, there were, didn't they change the?
There's no longer bond rework.
Yeah, you used to have to put down a bond of a certain amount of money, which we just took all their money, so they couldn't put a bond down. Now they don't have to do that anymore, so you can actually fight this without any money to begin with. I think there are still some changes that need to be made. I don't think this is perfect by any means, but to say that you have to have a conviction on a drug crime in order to seize a million dollars going down the road, that the person can't account for where they got the money from, is a stretch, so.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. So the council's position on this is, this is gonna be decided state level, like, you just want us to?
I just, I, this is, all, all we would be doing is taking this resolution and sending it to the Senate Judiciary Committee.
Okay.
Thank you.
Wait, it's the House, oh, it's, okay. Is there further comment this evening? Yeah, I think, I think my, my one concern is just, whoa. Councilmember Spicer, sorry.
Mayor, I just want to, um, thank you, be clear that we should, um, you want us to oppose this current legislation that will be before the Michigan House, is that correct?
It's, it's, right now, it's, it's passed the House, it's on its way to the, it's at the Senate Judiciary Committee right now. And so I think that there are changes that should be made to asset forfeiture in Michigan, but I don't think this is, I think, you know, I was, I also testified at the Senate Committee with Chief Kip and Deputy Chief Kern. I, I think this is, a- as far as the city of Albion is concerned, this would be the wrong path. I think there are other paths to accomplish, um, more clarity in, in this statute and, and more accountability. But this is just, this is gonna make it very, very difficult to do this in the future, and that's going to, I think, have a very negative impact for the city of Albion.
And so are most, are most, so most of the, I know we're, we're involved with the task force, but do most of those investigations lead to convictions, or is it just like a permanent civil thing?
No, it's not always just civil. A lot of them, I think the statistics are more than seventy-five percent lead to convictions. The problem is, there's almost always a delay because right now, for example, testing for heroin or cocaine and things like that takes upwards of six months to come back from the state police. So you do an arrest and a seizure, you won't know what's happening with those criminal charges until maybe like a year later. You know, so it's hard to track what an addict results in.
And if someone's found innocent, uh, let's say, let's say goes to trials full innocent, we've already taken.
The, the civil forfeiture depend, let's just say it's fifty thousand dollars, that would be litigated separately in civil court.
Okay.
So hypothetically, that case could be completed before the criminal case is concluded. But an individual in a civil case, in a civil forfeiture case, has the same protections that they do in a criminal case. They can make Fourth Amendment challenges, the cert, illegal search and seizure, things of that nature. So they say have all the same due process requirements, it's just in a civil context as opposed to. And just so the council's aware, this does not in any way impact the medical marijuana businesses in town because those are specifically immune to civil forfeiture.
Do you have any further questions from council? Okay. Seeing then we'll, uh, have a real call.
Councilmember Lawler?
No.
Spicer?
Wait a minute.
Uh, no. French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
No.
And Mayor Brown?
Uh, no. Item J, discussion approval of twenty nineteen, street projects, uh, is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Councilmember French?
I noticed in the list that Irwin Avenue was not on the list, so.
That's a diff. That's, that's a grant.
Right, no, I understand that, but it was my understanding that we didn't have a million dollars to spend on roads, unless we got the ice grant.
Well, I'll let.
Correct.
We're working on it.
Correct. Couple of meetings ago, as you recall, uh, interim city manager Kip and I brought you hopeful good news that, that ice grant is being reconsidered and that we will be recipients of that. That being said, as I mentioned that night, um, for the Irwin Avenue project, it's been on the books since longer than I've been in the director's office now, um, is a go for nineteen. It's just a matter of how much we're gonna do. What I brought to you tonight basically is, if in fact the ice grant does go through for us, I would like to take that money, that small urban money grant, that three hundred and seventy-five thousand I spoke of, and move that into another federally, federally approved street, uh, for twenty nineteen as well. If we don't use it, we're gonna lose it, basically. That's what I'm proposing in the additional twenty nineteen street projects. You should've had in your packet, three, um, additional proposals for, uh, North Street, from North Eaton Street to Baroque, Haven Road from South Monroe to the city limits, and North Clerk Street from East North Street to two hundred feet south of B Drive North. I've looked at things, I've gone over it, uh, I've talked, not only with our engineers, but some local people. I would recommend that we do, uh, North Street. It has a tremendous amount of truck traffic, um, I'm being told that the impact on the water system there will be limited. We're gonna have to do a little work, but not a lot. I think that that's the best candidate, although it is the most expensive. I think that it is the best candidate versus the other two. Uh, it's an east-west connector across the city, for the most part, probably two-thirds or so of the way across the city. It gets a tremendous amount of traffic, and as everybody knows, it's driven on it, it's in terrible shape. That's gonna be my recommendation over the other two. I would also add that I've spoke with Finance Director Mead. We did some projections out to the end of twenty nineteen. We don't see that the additional expense is gonna be a problem for us. Let me see here. One of the other notes that I'd like to bring up is that if in fact the ice grant does not go, we will only do a half a mile of Irwin Avenue from Findlay Drive to Woodlawn. That will cost us about the same thing as both of these projects will if we get the ice grant, which basically correlates into half a mile, uh, this amount versus almost two miles, pretty close to the same amount.
So, just, so, uh, we, as we start discussion, um, and I, I tried it this every time, so people might not know. So there are certain streets in the city that the city is fully responsible for, which are the local streets.
Correct.
And then there are other streets which are called major streets where, on a certain rotation of number of years, like a cycle, the state provides certain funding and then we provide a match.
Correct.
So basically, Erie Street, okay, every three years. So basically, like Erie Street, Berrien, I guess in this case, North, that, those are streets that are major streets.
Those major connectors, and that's basically set up by the federal government. They issue a map with traffic counts, truck traffic, those types of things. Those, that constitute a federally funded road.
Okay.
Well, then does Al.
Okay. Councilmember Reed?
Does Albion have money to fix any of its streets in, in the city? That's not the ones that the state helps on?
We do have money on our account. The reason I am proposing this is so that we don't basically forfeit on the three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars small urban grant. If we do one of our local streets, we're not gonna get that money. If the ice grant goes through, that money will probably be diverted to another community, is what'll happen.
But, but I'm talking about money that we can use. I, I guess, my whole thing is, I, there are, but you all, everybody here know, there's constant people saying, my street needs fixing, my street this, my street that. And you know, the way I feel about it is we all pay taxes, and, and we expect something back for the taxes that we pay.
I understand that.
And when we spend, when, when, when nothing of ours ever get taken care of, then we start to believe, you know, well, what about me? And I'm not saying what about me, because my street's got some holes, but it's not that bad. But I know some where the people I complain in because their streets are absolutely terrible. Some just plain gravel, and.
I understand that, I do.
Really feel bad that there's nothing being done about theirs, so.
Councilmember, uh, French?
We're Robb.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. I would agree with your recommendation. I, I travel on North Street quite a bit, and, and there are many residents who live on North Street, and I think that they would, would agree that it's one of the worst. I see this opportunity, as you describe it, Jim, as, as an opportunity to expand our limited resources, double our money, if you will, triple our money, if you will, to allow us to get more done for less money coming from our taxpayers. I think our taxpayers would appreciate the fact that their taxes are going and are being stretched by creative, uh, work with the state. And we're not, we're not addressing a, a minorly damaged road just to get the money. This road has been on our short list for a while.
They are all from this.
Counsel.
I understand.
Councilmember French, are you?
I'm, I'm done.
Okay, Councilmember Barnes, Councilmember Lawler, Councilmember Spicer.
So Jim, what I'm hearing you saying is, and I definitely am, I'm familiar with the, the cycle of three years on our major roads. I'm hearing you say, in order to get the money, we're gonna take, to get the grant, we're gonna take the matching money out of our local streets, money?
A portion will come out of the local, the street funds, a portion will come out of water fund, and a portion will come out of sewer fund.
Well, see, my concern is, first, second, and third, have never been done since the conception of putting down pavement and then to the gravel. And the last three years, um, I've had to step aside for the matching grant for, uh, Superior. I was told my streets would be done in one meeting, and then I come back and they weren't. So it's frustrating for my citizens over there that that local money won't be there with them. But I, I, I might be having the cart before the horse, but I'll talk to you later. I'm hoping that some of that local money is back because you, you measured those streets for me, and we know how much it takes to get it done. Thank you.
Councilmember Lawler?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want, um, the council and anyone else, um, city workers to actually go down for second and third, Broadwell and Wall Street. I went down there, um, past, past weekend, um, two weekends ago, and it's horrible. So I just wanna encourage all of us and plus our city workers to go down those streets.
Councilmember Spicer?
Oh, thank you, Mayor, I'm gonna pass.
So what, so, in, um, Director Linderson and I had a conversation about this, uh, I don't know, last week maybe. So hopefully we get the ice grant so we can do the entire Irwin Ave Street, right? That's a million-plus project. What, it's, it's not so much that we would, well, I guess we wouldn't get that money. So in, in, well, I'll say it this way, just to clarify with North Street, we're talking, we would be, we wouldn't be doing the entire North Street. We would be doing from.
North Eaton Street to Baroque.
Okay, so basically roughly half, yeah.
Areas.
Of that. So what I also talked about, and like I said, I had a resident, um, call me, and I went by there on Saturday on Third Street, um, and I guess their thing was just potholes, but there's also the same kind of, um, concern about the, the paving. And so when, when we talked, what, what I had asked about, so the, the, the street millage ends when? Is it nineteen is the last year of the current cycle? Okay. So the voters are gonna be asked to reapprove a street millage, well, if, if the council decide, asks, decides to ask them, at the, sometime in twenty nineteen?
It's actually, the street millage goes through twenty twenty.
Okay, so there's one.
There's an additional year yet, yes.
Okay.
Outside of next year.
Okay. And so, and that's not a major street year?
No.
Okay.
No, those will be, that'll be another local streets project of some sort.
Okay. So, and I know it depends on what we get, but, um, barring no kind of dip in revenue, what would be the amount that we would have, and that's not a major streets year, what amount of money would we have in that last year of the, the millage? Rough, I mean, I, I know we don't know, but like.
Help me out of your town. They're sorry. Seems like it generates, I wanna say, two hundred and twenty-five or so thousand a year?
Yeah, we were thinking about two forty.
About two forty a year it generates.
Okay. And then we know, and I'm sorry, I'm talking, I'm kinda talking off the cuff, we don't have all the, the details with us. Councilmember Barnes referenced the fact that, um, we had some old estimates that we probably had to estimate up a little bit, right? Do you, can you remember what those were for some of those streets?
I do not. I will say that these, the, the engineering estimates I've received may be on the high side.
Okay.
That's what I'm hoping for.
Okay.
If we get them, uh, up into the bid process early in the year.
Okay.
And that's been my experience so far, if we get them bid early, we usually come back under budget.
As a way to kind of, so I'm trying to reach a consensus and try to, um, respect the fact that, like I said, we're, we're operating within cycles, so there's certain things we have to observe with the state. But then also, like I said, I know that there have been residents on those streets who have been, you know, very, um, persistent. And I, and I, and, and so is there, tentatively, do you, would you see, or would object, or any, find any kind of technical objection if the council were to say, you know, for nineteen, pending us getting the ice grant, we do Irwin, because of the major street designation in the cycle period, we do from Eaton, on, on North Street Eaton to Berrien, but then in twenty twenty, we say, okay, the council, and I, and we can make the decision, but is there any, would there be any kind of technical problem to saying, you know, usually we do it year by year and we kind of plan out to say that we're gonna do some of those streets?
I don't see any technical problem with it.
Okay.
Say we're gonna do that, it's all about revenue.
Okay.
It's all about, as Councilman Reed mentioned there, it's, the color is green.
Okay, yeah. So, so, but there's no, other than, we have to see when we get there what, what develops, but there's no objection if council were to say we're going to, it, it is our intent.
Exactly.
To do those.
Exactly, and I, and I'm good with that.
Okay.
I'd be more than happy to work with you.
Okay.
You tell me what you want done, and I'll do the best to get it done.
Okay. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. So, is there any way we could look at, um, what could we do for second and third? I have driven here, and it is horrible. Is, what could we do in that area to get us to twenty twenty when they can all be replaced? Is there any patchwork? Is there any something that could be done?
You may be able to look at an overlay up there, um.
Continue.
I mean, basically, we don't really have the funding to do a lot up there, obviously. But we'll do what we can. And if we think that an overlay will help it, we'll try to do that. My guess is they probably need to minimally be milled and filled and probably a total reconstruct on them. Because probably that base is bad.
Councilmember Brown.
My understanding is, once we find out our matching portion to the grant, we will see what the balance we have in our local streets to see if we can do First, Second, and Third.
Correct.
I'm talking about this year. I'm not talking about 2020. That's two years down the road. So I'm just asking us to take a look at that.
If we're going to do the proposed 2019 projects, we're not going to be able to do anything, maybe an overlay and continue to pothole the best we can. We just do not have the funding for it. If we're going to go ahead with the 2019 projects.
And that's still subject to council approval.
Correct, that's why we're here.
So we still can, I can still bargain.
So, so what you need from us tonight is just approval on, we've already applied for ICE, the ICE grant. We need approval for North.
If in fact that ICE grant goes through.
Okay.
This is what I'd like to do in addition to take that diverted small urban money that was originally slated for Irwin Avenue.
Okay.
And move it to another federally approved street.
Okay. So what I entertain, I'd ask colleagues to entertain is an amendment to say that in 2020, the intent is to, to the extent possible, address that area, because I know there's, First, Second, and Third is Wild.
Right, Hartwell.
Yeah.
They all need work.
Yeah. Is that, because really right now, you know, I'm wrapping it up. This is tentative too, because it's, it depends on the grant anyways, the ICE grant. Yeah.
We still need to-
Yeah.
I would like to have approval to move ahead with it so that we can get the design portion done so that if it's a go, we're ready to get it bid out this winter so that we get those better prices.
Okay. Council, oh wait. I would go, well, yeah, you hold your hand first and then I'll come back to Councilmember Reed.
I just quickly want to ask, Mayor, do we have any idea when we anticipate receiving an answer as to when we would be approved for the ICE grant? Do we have any idea?
I know that Scott's been communicating with them.
They're, it's on hold for this time being right now. We're waiting on some other information. From everything they've explained to me, this is a project they intend to do in 2019. So that's the best I can say right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Reed.
No, I don't have any.
Okay. So I'm, you know, I'm in favor of, because of the cycle we're in, doing that portion of North Street. And then signaling our intent for 2020 to do some work in that First, Second, Third street area. Is, is there a motion to attach that to that main motion to approve what was presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on that amendment? Councilmember French.
So just to clarify, we are adding to this resolution the idea that the following year, we are going to address First, Second, Third, Wild, Hartwell.
Well-
We will, we will seek work in that area.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Barnes.
That area should be done now. I'm hoping that there's enough money left from the set aside money for that project that First, Second, and Third be done this year with that set aside money to the side.
So any further discussion on the amendment? Okay, we're going to do, Councilmember Lawler?
So he's making a motion to do that?
No, he's just voicing his opinion. Yeah. So basically this, voting for this would attach it to the main motion and just signal that the council is going to focus its attention on First, Second, and Third area in 2020. And, you know, if you're against that amendment, you can vote no. So is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, I do a roll call vote for that amendment.
Councilmember French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Oh.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes. We now have a main motion that was approved six to one. We now have a main motion to approve the main, to give approval for North Street with council's intent to focus on First, Second, and Third in the last year of the street millage in 2020. Is there any discussion on that amended main motion? Further discussion? Okay. Seeing, seeing none, I'd ask for a roll call vote please.
Councilmember Barnes?
Oh.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
No.
Lawler?
Yes.
Okay, what, okay, we're in a roll call.
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes. That was approved. Five to two, that was approved for the street projects. Item K, discussion of sale of city-owned property for parcels adjacent to and north of 1000 West Erie Street. Director Tracy.
Dr. Baker, who's in the audience this evening here, has purchased 1000 West Erie Street and is doing a rehab formerly known as the nursing home up there. He is wanting to purchase from the city four parcels. And you should have a small colored map. And what I'll do is go through the four parcels real quick on what I found with the city, how, when they had acquired them and if there was any cost. The one I'll start with is the smaller piece, which is under an acre, parcel number 51001-59701. And it's, it's right there to the east of-
Zero one or zero three?
Oh, excuse me, zero threes, sorry. That has no date that the city acquired it or nor does it show any cost involved with that, according to assessor's records. The next property I'll go to is adjacent to 1000 West Erie Street, right to the north of it. It's going to be 51001-597-02. That property was shown to be purchased by the city back in 2011 by, from Vantage Healthcare Corporation for $10, according to this paperwork. Moving up to the River Properties, the larger piece, which is low over 11 acres, directly behind Oak Meadows to North Oak Meadows is 51001-598-02. Shows that the city had purchased that in 1999 for $12,168 from the Housing Authority. And the last property, which is to the east of that, right along the river, is low over 3.5 acres, 51001-59701. City purchased in 1992 from Vantage Healthcare Corporation for $18,400. So you have the background of these properties. As far as when they were acquired, exactly what the city had planned for them, I honestly could not tell you. I've never really been able to get an answer on that. So.
Councilmember French, oh, I'm sorry. One second, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I, and probably best thing after, if you have any questions on this, then I'll let Dr. Baker speak.
Okay. Councilmember French.
I'm looking at the Google map of this space and it is labeled McClure Park, the River Property. I also noticed on my Google map that the River, that the River Trail sort of abuts the property to the east of this property. In my work with Greg Strand, if I'm to understand correctly, that that River Trail is hoping to go along that McClure Park to the west as it tries to connect with the trail in Marshall. So I'm wondering if the owners, if we were to sell this property at whatever price, whether the owners would be welcome, would welcome that River Trail going through? And then also, why are we selling a park?
I, well.
So, and I, what you have on Google may be different than what it shows on ours. On ours, it shows the park further to the east. Not saying that it's not, maybe it was part of the plans in the city have it as part of it. I don't know. It's a possibility.
I thought McClure, I thought McClure Park was on the, the north banks.
Right, it is. But I'm just saying, I don't, you know, I don't know what the, what the city had planned and if they were going to include that at some point or not.
Well, I think it might be helpful to-
Right, so.
Mr. Baker. Good evening.
Good evening. Robert Baker. The only reason I'm interested in it is to put trails back there for the patients. Any benches I put in, I'll probably have to cement down or they'll be stolen. As, when I was here last time, be more than, that's all I'm using it for. It's pretty much landlocked. So it's pretty much worthless property except for nature trails. And as I mentioned last time, anything that the city wants to do, if you want to extend the walkway, I'm more than applicable to, to put an easement. We'll put that in there. Whatever the city wants is an easement because it won't change back there. It'll stay, so, so that doesn't bother me. And my only thinking was, it'll get on the tax rolls. I'll have the liability because kids play back there. They steal stuff and they, if, the neighbors told me they found a car back there not too long ago. So I would have the liability of policing it. And if anybody gets hurt, it's my liability rather than the city's. So I guess that's, that's pretty much what will happen to it. So there'll be no buildings on it. So, but if, if, if nobody likes my offer, I'd say, wait till somebody makes a better one. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, that's fair question. Councilmember French?
What's the asking price? I couldn't, I saw the application, but it's poorly photocopied, so I don't-
Can you say on the mic? Can you say on the mic?
One dollar.
Twenty-five acres.
Councilmember, attorney Arkenness.
One, one thing that I would point out even more. The buy sell agreement that we're presented with tonight indicates that the city would be responsible for title insurance for purposes of this property.
Okay, so we run into the- Yeah. Okay. Yeah, we're not approving tonight. So basically, this is, this is part of, I guess, the redevelopment of the parcel 51-001-597-00. And that's already been purchased and, you know, so that's, that's already taken place. I, as Councilmember French, or either Attorney Harkenness, Councilmember French mentioned, the council has already taken, or not taken the position, but we've been advised that we can't pay at least for those, those kinds of fees. So I think that would have to be discussed. And this is just basically discussion tonight, so we're not voting on anything. But is there any, are there any concerns or comments once that has been dealt with in terms of like the title, fees, insurance? Councilmembers French?
I don't have any other concerns. Thank you very much. I do have a question on the map though. There is a thin strip that separates not 59700 to 59703. Is that the power easement?
Yes.
Well, that also comes down through where the old railroad, I believe at least portion of it was, so I'm not, there's, there's power lines that come across and part of that too, but I think at one time it may have been part of the old urban, inner urban.
So we'd be mowing that? Or would the new owner be mowing that?
Right now, it's been pretty much owned by-
Okay, I just-
People who have had the property next to it.
Okay. And, and I guess the other question is, to your knowledge, I'll say it that way, when is the last time we've had, I guess, interest expressed in purchasing those lots?
Never that I'm aware of.
Okay.
So, that I'm aware of anyway, so.
Okay.
Mayor Privilege?
Yes. Councilmember Lawler?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make a comment. We can't keep selling property for a dollar. We need to really hurry up and get something in place because I really don't like that idea of selling property for a dollar.
I think, I think that's really something the council's going to have to do, some, have some further discussion about. I think this is, this is not, are those parcels zone residential?
Yeah.
They are? Ah, okay. Okay.
They are R3, which is multifamily.
Okay, okay. So what, what we can do is work through the title fees because the city can't do that, but, and have the discussion and come back to council once we've discussed that with Mr. Baker. So this, this was basically, there were meetings with Mr. Baker and city staff and UCI staff regarding this. And so this was the opportunity for council to be informed and to have some input so that we're not, you know, caught off guard when it comes back to us. So if you have any other concerns, please let the interim manager and Director Tracy know. Councilmember French?
Thank you. Just a follow up. Could we get an assessment of that property? Just so we know what we're doing.
We can go ahead. Are you talking about as far as from the city assessor themselves? Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to L, which was added through council action earlier, which is to amend the minutes.
Page three of eight. Page three of eight. The ruling was wrong. I like to express, another rule is that when we have those type of debates, the new rules do not allow the city attorney to give a refreshing from the rule. I really think that rule should be stripped because we could move forward very quickly if we allowed him just to look the rules up.
One quick question I have.
Page three of eight.
Is the, is the normal procedure for us to note if there was a, well, I'm saying, is that, is that the appropriate place to note an objection in the minutes? Or would that be noted in just the comments for this meeting? So if there- Yeah, if there was a point of order and a request for a ruling and a ruling was made at the previous meeting and there was no vote to overturn the ruling, and that's noted in the minutes. Subsequently, if there's a challenge to that ruling, is that noted in the previous minutes or would that just be noted in the meetings for this minute? This meeting? Okay. Okay.
Which is right, what you're having right now.
Yeah, okay. So what, what, what we'll do, just to speed it up here, is I'd ask that we just approve the minutes, but then we note in this meeting's minutes that that objection was raised. Okay. Seeing no objection to that, I'd ask for just, this is under a roll call vote to approve the minutes.
Yes. Oh, we have to do roll call for minutes?
Does it matter? Okay, we'll do a vote, so, okay. Uh, we'll just do a voice vote, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? No. Uh, future agenda items, are there future agenda items? Councilmember Brown, councilmember Reed.
Ms. Reed.
Oh, yeah, okay, councilmember Reed.
I'd like to reschedule the rental certification study session, uh, study session that was canceled.
Okay, yes. Yes. Okay, we'll do that, and I'll make sure, yeah. Councilmember Brown.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I'd like, we had talked about bringing Attorney Smith down to do our council rules, we never did that. So I'm asking that we do that immediately.
Okay. Councilmember Barnes. Is any other future agenda items?
I, I brung this up, but I, since then, I've also received just some more concerns, so I want to kind of have a discussion, council level, about, I guess, towing, because that's something that I've, I've just continued to get calls about, oh, excuse me, when, if someone's arrested or a vehicle is basically, I guess, commandeered, I guess it's being towed and held, and so, yeah, I've, I've had a number of calls about that for the past couple of months, and had one today. So just want to make that a discussion, and I'll talk to the interim manager about that in, in preparation for that discussion, so. Is there any, are there any further future agenda items?
And then also, I should say, because of what was, what the council did earlier, there was a consensus on, on doing the, oh, okay, you're good. On, on doing the, the joint meeting, so I'll be in contact with EDC too. Councilmember Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor. Can I put the Maple Street parking on the agenda? Or is that something we can discuss without? Okay, alright. No, thank you.
Are there any further future agenda items this evening? Okay, all of councils here, this time we have public comment, persons addressing the city council shall limit their comments to no more than three minutes. We ask that you observe proper decorum, please state your name and address.
Hello, my name's John Dunklin. I have a newspaper to start out with, that says Albion Recorder, July thirteenth, two thousand seventeen. Albion City Council hears complaints about sidewalks and bad streets. John Dunklin is not a happy residence of Albion. He has been through this much more than five times. My grandmother has owned the house that I stay at at twelve oh three Second Street for twenty-five years. My mom has owned it for ten. I've owned it for sixteen. Within four decades, you guys still turn away from these streets, but you say Irwin Ave. needed? Irwin Ave. has been done before, or partially done. First, second, third, and wild are out of code, and you, the mayor, should be held accountable. If you sit here and let this go on, and you pass this, you should be brought down off that stand. Because this is ridiculous. You should be held accountable. Each one of you people that sit up here and vote to this should be held accountable. The low come, low income areas have not been fixed in five decades. It took me six months to a year to get y'all to fix a fire hydrant with a bag on it. How is this possible? You keep avoiding the low income area? Let's avoid the college area. Let's avoid something else. Let's avoid downtown, but stop avoiding the people who pay you. We are the residents of this town, we are the heart of this town. And if y'all don't see that, all y'all need to come down. And my question is today, is there a street cleaner that runs in this town, Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
So.
Mr. Mayor, is there a street cleaner that runs in this town, Mr. Mayor? Yes or no, please? Can you comment to this situation?
I, I can't comment during public comment, but I.
Okay, well, this has been two thousand seventeen. Two thousand seventeen, and you still have not commented? It's almost been a year to the days that went by, and you still can't comment? Why? I pay my taxes, I bring my properties up to code. You try to find me, you try to do everything to me, I'm not leaving. Now it's time for Albion to come up the code that you made me live by. You made my grandmother live by it, you made my mother live by it, now you've made me live by it. So now it's time for you guys to live by it. Do your job, or come down, is what I'm asking. Because you haven't answered nothing in a year's time.
Thank you.
There's no thank you.
Is there further public comments this evening?
For proper decor, I wasn't done. Excuse me.
But the, the time is up, so you have three minutes.
The time is up?
Yeah, thank you.
Well, maybe yours is too.
Thank you. Is there further public comment this evening? Thanks.
Dave Atchison, one oh eight West jury. First, I'd like to applaud and thank councilmember Barnes for his comments on following the rules, your admonition to the council to follow the rules. Mayor Brown, I want to compliment you and thank you for advising the importance for all of the council to be fair and wise stewards of the taxpayers' dollars. I really appreciate that, because I do pay my taxes. And then councilmember French, I can't thank you enough for making an issue of transparency and how important it is. And having said that, and emphasize those, I'm here to talk about the city council's violation of City Ordinance Section two, three ninety-six, award of bids, which happened on the twenty first of May. Despite the city attorney's painstaking efforts to advising council on the proper way to go through the bids, which is start at the bottom, and you can only disregard one of the bids if you have reason to believe they cannot responsibly meet the terms of the bid, terms of the contract, and complete the work. You did have one bid, which you finally discussed, and because of there was some information claiming they had previously done business with Albion, which apparently is not true, you decided that that made the rest of the proposal at question. I understand that. And then despite the effort of councilmember French, Reed, and councilmember Barnes, to get you to look at Michigan Municipal League, which is the next lowest bid, y'all voted one of your famous four to three votes and threw it out. Then you went on to discuss other ones. And Mayor Barnes, you talked, or, I'm sorry, Mayor Brown, you, maybe I'm getting ahead myself there. You talked about, if you want to buy a Cadillac with all the bells and whistles, you need to spend more money. Well, I'm here to say, if those bells and whistles are really important for this search, they should have been in the proposal that the city issued, which all of the city council reviewed and approved. So since it was not in the request for proposal, it is not ethical. It is not ethical, it is not fair to consider those factors when making your selection. If it was important and necessary, it should have been in the proposal. No explanation was provided as to how Michigan Municipal League would not be responsible in completing the terms of the contract. They found the last city manager, who the vast majority of the citizens thought was fantastic, gifted, tremendous asset. Okay? So it's, the section two, three ninety-six requires that when the award is not given to the lowest bidder, a full and complete statement of the reason shall be prepared by the purchasing agent and filed with the papers relating to the transaction. I call upon the city council, and you, Mayor Brown, to make those full and complete statements public and explain why you found it necessary to spend more money than the lowest responsible bidder.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maury Ditzler, five oh one East Michigan. And just a, a quick clarification, during some conversation this evening, the, the statement was made that, that everyone can invest in ARC. And it's what's actually true, is that no one can invest in ARC. ARC is not a vehicle for making investments, there are other opportunities in town to make investments. ARC is something you can donate to. It's a charity, right? And so, so cash checks or buildings that are, that go to ARC are not, do not go to ARC as an investment, they go to ARC as a donation. And, and that should be clear for several reasons. One, we don't want people sending money to ARC thinking they're gonna get money back from it. But the second reason is that when we hear about people giving a money or a check to ARC, we should all thank them and know that in fact they're giving a donation, they're not expecting anything back for it.
Is there any further, okay. Oh, did you get that first?
Bill Dobbin's, fifty nine oh one East Michigan Avenue. I would echo what, what Dr. Ditzler just said, is that ARC is a federally qualified five oh one C three. It's not an investment organization, it's not a private investment organization. It's a public charity that takes donations, number one. Number two is that the comment made about the college imprint is on the Peabody Project or the, or the brewery is absolutely wrong. They certainly are involved in the, in the hotel, they're involved in the Leddington Center. They have nothing to do with the private investment done in either one of those projects here in the community.
Yet another, another person doing public comments, Intrexal eleven twelve East Porter. I just want to be really quick, there is an upcoming event that the Vista team is working on in conjunction with the Albion Healthcare Alliance, Public Safety Department. It's the Health and Safety Expo on June twenty-third, from twelve to four, at the city of Albion Fire Station. There will be live music concessions, or not live music, but there will be music concessions and other family events. It's got booths for information, it's got practical demonstrations, baby CPR, fire safety, Zumba, that sort of thing, so. Twelve to four, June twenty-third, it's a Saturday, Albion Fire Station. Be there, get some food, learn about safety. Have a good night.
Yes. Councilmember French.
Thank you. Will there be car seat work done, you know, advising, teaching how to install car seats and things like that?
You know, that's a good question. I'm, have not been as involved in this project as some of the other Vista members, so I will have to get back to you.
Thank you.
Mary Slater, five seventeen East Michigan. Just to let you all know that French Market is this Saturday in Stoffer Plaza, nine to two. It's in honor of our sister city connection, it's in combination with the regular farmer's market, and there will be many additional booths with other crafts and artisans, and a crepe table.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, interim major Kip, Clark Domingo, residents of the city of Albion and the folks watching this evening. Good evening, my name is Gary Tompkins, I'm your county commissioner. It's always great to be with you folks each and every month. A couple of items actually bubbled up this afternoon I want to comment to you on. First of all, some unfortunate news, certainly within the county. The Cowan County Health Department this afternoon emailed to us two confirmed cases of pertussis, which is whooping cough, including an infant and a student that had been diagnosed in Cowan County this past week. As many of you know, pertussis is a contagious bacterial disease, and very highly contagious, and it's a very much severe illness, certainly to the infants and to all ages potentially. But basically, the bottom line would be very quickly, certainly infants need to get vaccinated, and also people of all ages need to get vaccinated if you've not been vaccinated. Currently, right now, there's been a hundred and forty-five cases of pertussis reported in Michigan between January one and April thirty, two thousand eighteen. So something to keep in mind, and certainly if you have any further, any questions, you can certainly contact the Cowan County Health Department. Additionally, also, something that's been on the, on the minds of many. Additionally, this afternoon, I received communication that the Cowan County Purchasing Office has issued an official RFP for a countywide transit study, and the responses are due July second. Now, this goes within the timeline to have the study complete by the fall of two thousand nineteen. As you know, countywide transit is something we've been talking about amongst everybody collectively for some time, so just, I'll keep you up to date as we move forward with that. At the recent Senior Village Allocation Committee that I'm part of, we approved this past Friday, a request from the community action for an additional supplemental for home heating assistance, in the amount of twenty-seven thousand dollars, and also minor home repairs in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. There's a lot of need right now currently in the community, especially amongst seniors, not only to bore home heating assistance, because it was a cold spring, and they're trying to get a jump on it, so the fall, obviously. And then also minor home repairs as well. So if you know any seniors that need some kind of level of minor home repair or home heating assistance, please have them contact the Cowan County Office of Senior Services. Obviously, the income qualifications must be applied, but certainly, it's, certainly it's an opportunity to take advantage if people need it, certainly. As always, my monthly newsletter is available, most of you folks do receive it. It's a great resource to know what's going on in around the seventh district. Copies, hard copies are available at the Albion District Library as well. Interesting enough, in the newsletter this month, on page three, I talk about specifically what you folks were just talking about, were roads, as a matter of fact. Act fifty-one, the Michigan Transportation Fund, which actually funds roads, not only at the state level, but also at the county level, and also at the municipality level. Well, I did a comparative between fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, eighteen, and we did get an additional, we did get additional close to a billion dollars in terms of what we received from fifteen, sixteen, to seventeen, and eighteen. However, about five hundred million dollars is taken right off the top into, in departmental grants and various other things that, that go even before it gets to the level in which it's distributed amongst municipalities, county, and state. Basically, what my research has concluded is the fact that Michigan only spends a hundred and fifty-four dollars per capita on roads. When you compare that with our area, our local states right around us, compared to Ohio at two fourteen, Indiana at two eighty-nine, Wisconsin at three oh two, Illinois at four twelve, and Pennsylvania five thirty. So you can see, we certainly don't spend, we don't use roads, or roads aren't used as a priority here in the state of Michigan, and we need to work to get Act fifty-one changed right now, based, right now currently, it's a flawed system, and it needs to be something done to it. So I will continue to work on my part to, to try to get that changed. So again, just something to take in consideration. Also, on page four, I detailed the upcoming recycling events, not only with scrap tire collection, but also with electronics events that's happening July twenty-eighth. And then finally, as I'm sitting here tonight, in two occasions, quiet zones. I know it's something that councilmember French had talked about, and, and I happen to hear that both times, and something I'm looking into as well, so. With that being said, unless there's any questions, why, I'm relatively quick tonight. If there's no other questions, always great to be with you folks each and every month. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Sorry.
No problem.
I know it's late, I'm tired too. Amy DePraise, Executive Director of ARC and President of the Albion Economic Development Corporation. I've got three things. The fifth bucket mayor that you left out was infrastructure for rising tide, and it was discussed here at length, so obviously, it was, it's an important element. I'd like to thank Dr. Baker for his investment into Albion, and for buying a building that much needed investment, so thank you. And then the last thing really is, I've said it to you before, I'm gonna say it to you again, my door is open. Anytime you have questions, I would hope that you would come and talk to me. You're right, I'm busy, I'm really busy. But I don't know that I've ever turned away an appointment, especially from one of, of you all. And I would rec, I would hope that you would, you would encourage your residents to come and talk to. The only way we're gonna get through these tough conversations is to have them, and to make sure that they don't feel that they can't ask those questions. I would never want them to feel that way. Councilmember Barnes came and talked to me, was very honest with me, and I think I was extremely honest back. There isn't anything to hide. Everything is open, everything is, is, is on the table for discussion. So I would encourage you to take advantage of that, and we'll look forward to your, your call.
Thank you. Seeing no further public comments, I do have one public comment. I just want to thank council again for its approving a commitment to first and second and third streets in the two thousand twenty street funding year. I want to thank council for that. And then I want to note that the RFP that we used to solicit bids was actually based on the International City and County Managers Association template, and allows for each vendor to propose to us their proposal for how they run a search, and so that different people do different things.
and so that different people do different things, it's a proposal for ideally what they would do. So in this case, for example, there's currently a, a survey out to the community, it's including council and community members. That's not something that was proposed in the, for example, the MML bid, so with that, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and support, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? This meeting is adjourned.
So, did you, you want that?